It is six o'clock PM and I call to order the March fifteenth, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting. Do I hear a motion to enter executive session for discussion of 2021, 22, and 22, 2022, 23? That is a lot of twenties. Let me try that again. 2021, 22, and 2022, 23 employment recommendations and to discuss proposed property contractual arrangements for the purchase of land for a new River Bluff area elementary school.
Madam Chair, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion carries and we will now enter into executive session.
Were those, is that where you were when you posted those tiny dinner bowls? The dinner bowls, the fast ones.
My friends about said last I knew them they were chasing around. They had raw chicken over french fries. They were already cooked.
Oh, well, that's good to know. I got their honey today. Okay. Hey, hey, I'm hot here today, isn't it?
I'm usually not at the top hole.
I'm hot.
Adaptable.
Hello, Mr. Green, what do you, what do you do for a living?
I am a software developer.
Okay.
I work for a public benefit company. Platform for arts company in the school district.
Oh, okay.
Do you like to make home movies?
All right.
Or have you, or how like programs that?
[laughing]
I'm an entrepreneur, kind of looking at you.
But you, I think you, you write, you write programs.
I know a lot of it.
Yeah.
One of our, one of my current pet projects has to do with a very, very, very large and very familiar company that has twenty-three thousand employees and making sure that... I'll be very, very careful.
I, I, I used to work on...
I want to try some of United Healthcare. I understand it's a...
But...
You're all deductions and, and you have to be exact. I actually wrote our, our holiday system that... I was told...
I did, so did you get the first?
We did.
All right, see, I didn't, we did not win our first.
Dajia Hao, this is Lexington One. Welcome to Meadow Glen Elementary School.
Experience the magic of language in immersion classrooms across Lexington County School District One. Students in Lexington District One's immersion classes become bilingual and bilinguine, able to read, write, and speak in another language, as well as becoming global citizens. Beginning in five-year-old kindergarten, students in the district's partial immersion program spend half the day studying the regular grade-level curriculum and standards in classes conducted in the target language. By spending more time in the language through immersion, students achieve much higher levels of fluency than traditional language instruction. Students can learn Spanish at Centerville, Gilbert, Pleasant Hill, and Red Bank elementary schools. Or students can immerse themselves in the German language at Deerfield Elementary, while students can also learn French at Midway Elementary, as well as Mandarin Chinese at Meadow Glen Elementary. Why immersion? Becoming bilingual allows for enriched mental development, better thinking and listening skills, the ability to communicate in multiple languages, exposure to other cultures and countries, and a head start in language study for college and career. Interested in participating in Lexington District One's immersion program? Registration begins February twenty-fourth.
...
And that's when you see that all the work that you do, that you feel like sometimes is not known or seen as much, you're like, you know what, this is why we do what we do. It's for these kids to be given an opportunity just like everyone else.
Being a national unified champion school means so much to me as a principal because what it represents is the heart that our school has. It represents our culture, it represents our community, it represents our staff, students, and teachers. So having this award is probably one of the greatest awards we will ever achieve.
All you need is love.
It's just different here. I think back to Dr. Little saying "all means all," and it really is a district of love and acceptance.
The one great thing about our school and winning this award is that it's about how we bring each other together. Our children are learning at a very young age that just because you might look different or learn different, that at the end of the day, we all have the same heart.
They make me happy when they help me. I love Lake Murray.
He was born in 1893, middle of the Jim Crow South.
Seeing it and actually coming here and looking at the other cemetery that actually has slaves in them, it really just moved me. We came up here, actually Mr. Burgess showed us with our history class, we came up here and he gave this really, this speech on Davis Gant and I remember, I remember standing up there and I wanted to do something and just, just really knowing that like, that he was a real person.
Of course, it's going to take a full another war and then the civil rights movement to make his and his compatriots' hopes a reality.
This past May, we had an incredible student experience in which two of my students, Rachel Lagine and Karina Koali, decided after taking this tour that they wanted to do something. They wanted to do something to preserve this cemetery and honor the legacy of the families buried in here. And so they, they organized a student-led, student-planned, student-executed brush cleanup in the cemetery. That, that much of the cemetery, roughly 60 to 70% of it was overgrown with scrub trees and weeds and vines and, and with that, we felt that, and they felt it was important that if families wished to come here, they should be able to visit all the graves. And so on the course of a Saturday morning in May, over three to three and a half hours, 25 to 30 students gave of their time and their selves and helped uncover the history that exists in this cemetery.
It's remarkable, honestly, to see all of the stuff and that we have this history about him, whereas all of the others, you don't, you don't have that. It's just a really remarkable thing to know that these people were people and not just indentions in, in the ground.
We have an opportunity to do history the right way. History is not sitting in desks, in rows with a teacher regurgitating facts and figures. Not only do students get to take the tour here, my students also have an opportunity to become the storytellers, the truth-tellers about the experiences of the African-American community. And so now we've developed a kind of legacy project where one class passes it on to the next and this powerful story that exists right here on our campus.
I think it's just a remarkable place and we don't have something like this everywhere and that as long as it's here and it's maintained, that we should know as much as we can and that it never really stops here.
大家好，这是 Lexington One，欢迎来梅德兰 elementary school.
Experience the magic of language in immersion classrooms across Lexington County School District One. Students in Lexington District One's immersion classes become bilingual and bilinguine, able to read, write, and speak in another language, as well as becoming global citizens. Beginning in five-year-old kindergarten, students in the district's partial immersion program spend half the day studying the regular grade level curriculum and standards in classes conducted in the target language. By spending more time in the language through immersion, students achieve much higher levels of fluency than traditional language instruction. Students can learn Spanish at Centerville, Gilbert, Pleasant Hill, and Red Bank Elementary Schools. Or students can immerse themselves in the German language at Deerfield Elementary, while students can also learn French at Midway Elementary, as well as Mandarin Chinese at Meadow Glen Elementary. Why immersion? Becoming bilingual allows for enriched mental development, better thinking and listening skills, the ability to communicate in multiple languages, exposure to other cultures and countries, and a head start in language study for college and career.
Good morning.
Interested in participating in Lexington District One's immersion program? Registration begins February twenty-fourth.
Oh, these are, I think that's not yours.
Work with me tonight. I'm trying to steal the oxygen from the...
Okay, well, but, um, I meant to call you, take, Jeff asked.
Congratulations.
He said for us to not call on officers. Or to not call on the officers. Um, because he said they're here for, for the kinds of... It really needs to be done through the chair and then having somebody from the... But I hope he doesn't come up tonight, so.
We're going to limit to fifteen minutes.
Okay. Okay, we ready?
Good evening. Do I hear a motion to conclude executive session and return to general session?
Madam Chair, move the board to conclude executive session and return to general session.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion carries. I call to order the general session of the March fifteenth board meeting. The district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting. The district tapes the meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. At this time, I yield the floor to Dr. Kyle Guyton to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Chair, fellow board members, staff, and guests, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Against to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Board members, you have received the minutes of the February fifteenth board meeting. Other than corrections that have been received and made, are there any other corrections? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as presented. All right, we are moving on to reports and action items from executive session. Do I hear a motion that the board approved twenty-nine certified recommendations for the 2022-2023 academic year?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve those twenty-nine certified recommendations for 2022-2023 academic year.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Henson. Is there any discussion?
So Ms. Price, how's it looking for next school year?
Well, we are pleased to bring you those names tonight, but of course, we would love to have that many more. So we encourage you to tell all the people about Lexington One and coming to join us. It is a tight market and we want to have the very best here with us, so.
Thank you very much. Board, any questions for Ms. Price? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear a motion that the board approve one administrative recommendation for the 2021-2022 academic year and two administrative recommendations for the 2022-2023 academic year?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve one administrative recommendation, 2021-2022 academic year, and two administrative recommendations for 2022-2023 academic year.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion that the board approve fifty-five administrative renewals for the 2022-2023 academic year as presented by administration?
I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Is there any discussion?
Um, I'd like to take this moment to thank Dr. Little and this senior leadership team because that is an impressive roster of leaders across our district. Uh, I think we forget, again, how many lives and how many children and families that interface with our district. But those leaders set the tone here in the central services, as well of all, as well as our schools. So thank y'all very much for all y'all do.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear a motion for the board to accept the newly hired support staff report as presented by administration?
Madam Chair, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Is there any discussion?
And we couldn't do it without their work as well, so.
That's exactly right. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. Do I hear a motion that the board authorize administration to enter into option agreements for the purpose of building a new elementary school in the River Bluff attendance area?
So Madam Chair, if you'll bear, bear with me, but this is a long motion, so, but the details are important. So I move that the board authorize the administration to enter into four option agreements related to a parcel known by Lexington County, TMS number zero-zero-three-five-zero-zero-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-one-four, containing approximately thirty acres with Beverly G. Cleckley for the purpose of building a new elementary school in the River Bluff attendance area. Number two, TMS zero-zero-three-five-zero-zero-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-one-two, containing approximately two-point-two-six acres with River Lee Associates LLC for the purpose of building a new elementary school in the River Bluff attendance area. Parcel number three is TMS zero-zero-three-five-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-nine-nine, containing approximately nine-point-five acres with Joseph L. Cleckley for the purpose of building a new elementary school in the River Bluff attendance area. And finally, parcel TMS number zero-zero-three-five-zero-zero-zero-two-one-six-five, containing approximately point-zero-four acres with River Gate and Associates LLC for the purpose of building a new elementary school in the River Bluff attendance area.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters to walk us through and explain what we just listened to. The motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Powers. I hope she doesn't make you read that again when we're finished, but I'll, I'll try to explain this very well for you. Um, appreciate the opportunity to explain this to you this evening. As you recall, in the 2018 bond referendum, um, the voters voted on building a new elementary school in the River Bluff attendance area. And so this property is related to accomplishing that goal. Uh, the primary reason for supporting the, the, uh, new elementary school in that attendance area is related to the growth, um, in what we kind of know, know as the triangle, which is Northlake Boulevard here, uh, some folks refer to that as Highway Six. And then we've got, um, uh, three-seventy-eight this way, and then Corley Mill Road this way. So, um, in our early facility study work leading up to that referendum in this triangle, uh, there were some anticipated nine thousand potential home starts, um, in that community. Um, and if you, if you look back, I was telling this earlier this evening, if you look back, we're really now, um, gosh, it seems hard to believe, but almost forty years, thirty-five years in the White Knoll and Oak Grove community. Uh, you think about Oak Grove Elementary School, you ride just a couple of miles, you run into White Knoll Elementary School. You ride just a couple of miles, you run into Red Bank Elementary School. You ride a couple of miles, you run into Sack Scott Elementary School. Now you ride a couple of miles, you run into Carolyn... Now, you ride a couple of miles, you run into Carolyn Springs Elementary School. Uh, and so this community, um, i- is lagging behind, um, that community, which was early development, uh, years ago. And so ultimately, um, you know, we anticipate placement of, of another school in this area to, to kind of work with that enrollment and that growth, um, that's anticipated. And so, all the dots that you see represented here are our current student, uh, population. Uh, it does not represent future students, um, and certainly not homes that don't have, um, currently a student enrolled. The attendance areas, uh, this is Midway, uh, this, this kind of tannish color, I'll say. Uh, Midway Elementary School sits here on Midway Road. And this pink color is Metaglin Elementary, which sits, uh, down here off of Jenny Lane. And so, looking at, um, where we would put a school, uh, typically, obviously, we want to site a school, uh, generally where our students are located or as close to them as possible, uh, to minimize, uh, travel distances and, uh, so forth for our students. And so, uh, the property in question that, that we're looking at is, um, right here, um, excuse me, this, the, the parcels are, um, this track here, and I'll, I'll highlight these. But this neighborhood that's right here, um, is Saluda River Club. Um, this is, uh, another neighborhood that's in the front of that, um, neighborhood that was developed by the Mungo Company, I think, a number of years ago. This is a woodmill neighborhood, then you have Cleckley Colony over here. Uh, so you can see, uh, a number of, uh, existing houses already in place. Um, this area right here, this property has sold recently and is being developed by Saluda River Club. So, very soon, it will look much like this does as well. So, um, to give, we mentioned four parcels. Um, this is the main parcel that we would be building a school on, approximately thirty-acre track. Uh, we would look to locate the school in this general area here. And, and as, as we do this, which we've also done in some of our other recent, um, developments, we would provide connectivity, um, to the adjacent neighborhoods. So, all of these students would be able to access our, our campus without going out on any main road. Um, so they would be able to access this directly from, from the neighborhood. That's the, the first parcel that we're looking at. Um, this is the second parcel, uh, this is the Riverly and Associates parcel. Uh, sorry, the previous part, this was Ms. Beverly Cleckley. Riverly and Associates is there, uh, again, that provides some additional road fronts in that, that space. Um, and then this is the, the largest parcel, but if you, you'll notice, uh, we're not buying this track of land. Uh, we're only, um, proposing to purchase about nine-and-a-half acres of it. And I'll, I'll detail that in a minute as we, um, look at the conceptual site layout. And then there's one small parcel across the street here, this is, uh, Lee Cleckley Road. And that little parcel, uh, would be purchased in anticipation of turning lanes being, um, incorporated into Lee Cleckley Road. And for the additional road improvements that we would do associated with the development of the site. So, those are the four parcels. Um, that was, again, a small point-zero-four acres, uh, going back just the, approximately nine-and-a-half acres of, of the, um, Mr. Joseph Cleckley's property. And then, again, about two-point-two-six acres of the Riverly, uh, and Associates property. And then the main site would be, uh, Ms. Beverly Cleckley. So, I'm just stepping back through again. Uh, we always look at, uh, you know, the impact of environmental, uh, features on our sites that, that we look to develop. Wetlands, obviously, is a big one. Uh, and so these are the delineated wetlands that, um, are in existence right now that, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, is aware of. And you can see, um, currently, there are no wetlands in the area that we would look to develop in this space here. Uh, there is a small, uh, wetland area right in, in this area here, it kind of touches on that property line there, you can see that. Um, and so this, just for your information, as you look at this, this kind of open space here is a, a large, um, S E, or Dominion Power Line, uh, that runs through to serve, serve these communities. And ultimately, it ends up running right behind, um, River Bluff High School and some other areas on up Corley Mill Road. Uh, we also look at topography, uh, topography is very important when you're looking at site development. Um, this area over, over here where the, um, we would look to site the school is a, is a pretty friendly area. Topographically, it doesn't have a huge slope and, um, we would be able to, to develop this with, um, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty easy, um, and minimal impact, um, you know, to the surrounding area as well. So, um, that's, that's good. Now, the, on this other side over here, there are some ravines and you, you can see that, um, right through here. There's a draw there and a draw there. And so there are some pretty good slopes on that side, but again, we're not looking to purchase any of that land. Um, it is anticipated, um, that that will be developed, um, for future home sites, um, at some point by, uh, the property owner, um, down the road. And so this is a conceptual layout of what the site, uh, could potentially look like. Um, we would put in a boulevard entrance, uh, which is here. Um, and then we would connect that boulevard to, um, our internal, uh, site stacking. Uh, all of our newer schools are required to, uh, by the Office of School Facilities and S C D O T, to have a pretty lengthy stacking lane. Um, and, uh, that's so that we can, uh, stack parent cars in the, in those areas during the pickup timeframe. Usually, drop-off is not as important because people come at different times at drop-off. But at pickup, it's all kind of everybody at one time. And so, we would provide, uh, the stacking required to support the school site, um, and include all of that on our property so that this boulevard, um, would maintain, you know, its, its openness. Now, this boulevard would end up being a county road, um, after our development is completed. And it would end up ultimately probably being connected, um, you know, by a developer back here to, uh, the backside in that neighborhood. And as I said, um, this kind of represents one of those draws that is there, it's a little, uh, finger there. Um, and so that, this area would probably be home sites and home sites in here. So, this boulevard would serve those potential future home sites. Um, the school layout that we're looking at here is our, uh, prototype, uh, layout that we started, uh, back in Rocky Creek, uh, in our last referendum. And so, um, with minor tweaks and adjustments, it'll, it'll end up looking, uh, some, somewhat like that, um, on this property, we would anticipate. The dotted line there, I did, get questions about that. That represents a hundred-foot, um, setback buffer that we, um, maintain with, uh, the county, um, as part of the development. And so I just want to point out a few numbers for you. Um, everybody likes to talk about, um, numbers with traffic. And so on Corley Mill Road, uh, according to S C D O T and their website, this is, um, fifteen to twenty-twenty data. So, twenty-twenty, about seventy-seven-hundred cars, um, up and down Corley Mill Road. Um, we have seen some, some drop-off during, you know, COVID time when folks weren't commuting back and forth to work as much, um, in some of these numbers. Um, this is down at the end of Corley Mill Road. So, more than likely, this would be come, people coming across the dam, um, and, and taking a left and coming onto Corley Mill. This is about thirty-one-hundred cars. So, you do get a good bit of traffic, um, coming from the Irma side, uh, to get over into West Columbia or into Lexington that comes down that road. Um, towards the end of Corley Mill, um, it's about ten-thousand cars, uh, a day that, that enter that, um, Corley Mill intersection with three-seventy-eight. Just taking a look, uh, on three-seventy-eight in the, um, major corridor there, this is right there, kind of at that Northside Boulevard area, that, um, Northside Church, Murphy Gas Station. You're looking at about thirty-three-hundred, thirty-three-thousand-eight-hundred cars, um, traverse that. We actually heard a number today that was closer to forty-four-thousand. Um, but I'm, you know, showing this number because this is what was available to us. Um, so it's a, it's a pretty high volume, um, of, of traffic that flows on, on Sunset Boulevard. I'm sure all of you have experienced that at one point or another. And then here at Hope Ferry Road, um, coming in from, uh, you know, that, that area, it's about seventy-two-hundred cars that come through that intersection as well. Um, it's recently been modified and, um, improved, um, to some degree. So, again, I just want to recap with you, this is the proposed, um, site here and, and adjacent to the students in these neighborhoods, um, that are close, right here, close by. Um, you know, and, and I'll, as I pointed out earlier, really what we're, we're looking to do or accomplish here is we would create small localized, um, attendance zones uh, out of, out of locating these, um, you know, the school here. You'd have a kind of a pocket in this area, a pocket here, and then a pocket over here. Um, you know, it's important, note, these students are already on our roadways. They're already going to schools. These students are already traveling all the way over to Midway. Um, and you know, these students o- over here are going over to Metaglin across, um, the three-seventy-eight intersection there. So, by, by locating the, the school here, um, it would, it will allow us to localize some of that traffic and, uh, keep, uh, these, these students off of, um, you know, our main roadways. Um, and also, as I said, create smaller attendance zones and, and more of a, um, localized attendance area for our students. So, um, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Salters? All right. And rather than asking Dr. Powers to recap the whole motion, we have a motion before us, um, to authorize the district to enter into four option agreements for, um, the River Bluff Area Elementary School.
Madam Chair, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the next steps in the process.
Okay, please do that, thank you.
So, should you pass this motion and we, we sign the option agreements, the next thing that we would do would be to, uh, contract with two independent appraisers. And then they would put, um, a dollar value on the properties. And then we would have negotiations with the sellers, um, to come to an agreement on a price. We would bring that price to the Board for a vote. Um, that price is written, um, into the option as a, as a appendix B. Um, and so we would vote, uh, you guys would vote on that price in, in this, uh, format. Of course, we would, um, vocalize that price and that would be, uh, discussed. And once you vote on that price, um, the next steps would be, we would complete our due diligence work, um, environmental studies, approvals with agencies and so forth. Once all of that is satisfied and we're ready to, uh, close on the property, we would bring back, again, um, information, uh, and share the due diligence work with you indicating it's been satisfied, and then you could vote to, uh, authorize us to close on the property and make the final purchase. So, there's, actually, there's two more votes after this evening related to the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salters. All right, Board, we have a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Jay does oppose.
All right, thank you. All right, and the motion carries, uh, six to one. All right.
And again, out of, of those of us up here that advocated for the bond referendum, uh, this school caused me the most heartburn because it is the most densely populated area. So, kudos to you and your team finding a location. So, thank you, Joe.
All right. We are now back to the newly re-instituted honors and achievements portion of our meeting, which we are all delighted because we love it when our students and our teachers and staff come and let us celebrate their accomplishments. Um, tonight's honorees include an award-winning dance team and two outstanding teachers. We will also spotlight one of our amazing schools, White Knoll Middle School. We feature tonight's honorees in our proof positive newsletter. That newsletter was on the sign-in table as you came in the door. Uh, if you did not pick one up, please, uh, do so on your way out and feel free to take, uh, more than one so that you have a keepsake and you can share one with, um, grandparents and others that could not be here this evening. Um, we do ask that you stay until, um, we finish recognizing all of tonight's honorees. Um, once we finish, we will give our honorees a chance to leave before we resume the rest of the meeting. Dr. Little, will you please step down and help us recognize our award winners? Honorees, when you hear your names, please come and stand with Dr. Little as we tell the au- audience all about you and your achievements. All right, our first award winners danced their way to first place at the South Carolina Dance Association State Championship in February. Would Pleasant Hill Middle eighth grader Addison Hall and PHMS dance teacher Shannon Kennedy, please come forward. Recently, the Pleasant Hill Middle Dance Team placed first at the South Carolina Dance Association State Championship, where the t- team took home first in jazz, palm, and hip-hop. In addition, Addison Hall was named state champion solo winner for the middle school division. Addison's solo rain dance received the highest score of the day out of all middle and high school groups and solos. Wow. Addison also received the powerhouse award, a special judges' award given at the competition. I would say she is a powerhouse. Congratulations to the PHMS dance team and to you, Addison, on a job very well done. Good job. Yeah, we're out of practice. Farmer Tim up here wants to know if you could do that rain dance and actually get us some rain. Good job, Addison, good, good job, Shannon.
We actually do have a question up here, what is palm dance? Miss Garris was absolutely correct, that's what she said.
Please be sure to get a video of that, that one. All right, moving along. Um, next, we invite River Bluff High Chinese teacher Rebecca Fang up to join Dr. Little. Ms. Fang was recently named the South Carolina Foreign Language Teachers Association 2022 Teacher of the Year. This. This achievement recognizes best practices and excellence in the teaching and learning of world languages as well as leadership in the profession. Ms. Fang has taught high school Chinese in Lexington District One for seven years. She founded the River Bluff Chinese Club and organizes annual celebrations for several Chinese festivals. She also helped students fundraise for their partner school in China during COVID-nineteen and donated face masks and thermometers to the partner school. Congratulations to you and thank you for providing students with a first-class experience. For our last staff award, we welcome Rocky Creek Elementary four-year-old kindergarten teacher Mary Jane Brett. Last April, Mary Jane was named Lexington District One Teacher of the Year, and she has served and represented our district well for this past year. Mary Jane teaches our youngest learners, giving them a strong foundation for life and a love of learning. She does not take for granted that she is often their very first teacher. She gets to know her students inside and outside the classroom, even visiting the homes of students to help ease their transition to school. As a teacher, she believes that relationships with her students and their families are paramount to helping students realize their dreams. She works hard to make every student feel loved, valued, and safe. She celebrates every student's win, big and small. By the end of the year, students love school and are confident learners. Well done. Mary Jane will pass the torch to the next district teacher of the year at the Teacher of the Year Celebration on March thirty-first at six-thirty P M at the Lexington One Performing Arts Center at River Bluff High School. We invite you all to attend the celebration. Mary Jane, we are very proud of you. Mary Jane, we are very proud of you and thankful to have you in Lexington One. All right, now for our school spotlight. Tonight, we are excited to honor one of our middle schools, White Knoll Middle School. Here with us tonight is Donald Hardy, Principal of White Knoll Middle. Also here are teachers Bonnie Slice and Tiffany Scholl, and White Knoll Middle School Student Body President Kennedy Putman. White Knoll Middle School prepares students for success by teaching them how to engage in self-directed learning that supports what they learn in the classroom. Students use data notebooks to record learning goals and assess their progress towards their academic goals. AVID, Advancement Via Individual Determination, is a program that motivates students to reach their academic potential and achieve their goals. By teaching critical thinking, inquiry, and self-advocacy, the AVID program at White Knoll Middle School empowers students to own their learning. The school's AVID program has grown from only five students to 84 students in elective classes. Students are enjoying the program and learning valuable study habits and career goals. Tiffany Scholl, math instructional coach and lead interventionist, leads the AVID program at White Knoll Middle School. White Knoll Middle also developed a positive referral system to provide encouragement for both students and staff. This system allows students and staff members to compliment each other for a job well done. Individuals are then praised on the school's social media, and I've seen a bunch of those, and I love that program, it's neat to see the referrals and the shout-outs. Since the program launched, White Knoll Middle has had more than 1,200 positive referrals for students and teachers. One parent shared how happy she was to see her student receive the positive referral and how it was great encouragement. Bonnie Slice, special education teacher at White Knoll Middle School, leads this program. Later in the meeting, we will hear a priority school update from Principal Don Hardy. Thank you, White Knoll Middle, for implementing meaningful, engaging instructional practices that develop students' ability to manage their own learning and for fostering a supportive environment that promotes strong relationships among staff, student, and families. And I just wanted to mention that March is Arts in Our Schools Month. During March, Lexington District One celebrates Arts in Our Schools Month. We would like to thank our students, staff, and community who support the many bands, choirs, orchestras, dance, and theater programs, and visual arts activities. The district's arts programs are constantly learning, growing, and excelling in creativity, knowledge, and skill. Did you know that the district has 145 visual and performing arts teachers and more than 21,500 students in kindergarten through grade 12 participating in our programs? Our music programs were named to National Association of Music Merchants List as one of the 2021 Best Communities for Music Education for the fourth year in a row. Our theater and dance programs continue to perform to packed audiences, and our visual arts exhibit both in our schools and in the community. This month, stop by the Lexington County Library to enjoy our elementary school's Art Fest exhibit now through March 26th, and our high school Lexington District One Art Walk exhibit March 25th through April 8th. Also, mark your calendars for March 31st at 6:30 PM when we conclude Arts in Our Schools Month with art walk performances by high school groups at the Ice House Amphitheater located on Main Street in Lexington. And we are displaying some art from our students as part of Arts in our Schools Month. Forts Pond, yes. So congratulations to everybody, and thank you, teachers. All right, I think I'm about done reading some things here. Conclusion, thank you for taking the time tonight to help us recognize our amazing students, staff, and schools. We have some very talented individuals in our district, and we love sharing their achievements with you. Now, just as I promised, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of our board meeting, if you'd like. However, if you need to leave, we will give you a quick and quiet moment to do that right now. Thank you all so much. All right, it is time for our superintendent's report. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Little for a little while.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I do want to say, it is Arts in Schools Month, and this was not part of my presentation, but I just want to say, having two children in our school district and being the son of a music educator, arts in schools is always a very important part of who I am as a leader and who I am as a dad. And the band program was absolutely incredible for my oldest daughter. My youngest daughter, as youngest children do, decided that she didn't want to play the piano like every other person in the family, and she's in the orchestra program, and just I'm tickled to death with what she's getting to experience and that opportunity. So again, a big shout-out to our teachers that really make that possible, because we all know that arts is really about the relationships you make with the people you're in there with and with the teachers, and they're always incredible relationship-driven teachers because they have to be, because kids don't have to take their class. And they reach out to kids and really make these meaningful connections, and I just wanted to say that. Again, that's not part of my presentation tonight, but thank you again to all the art teachers and staff who really have made a difference in the lives of so many of our students. I will tell you, so today, two years ago today, on Sunday afternoon, my senior leadership team met face-to-face in my office, and we were trying to finalize the plans for what we were going to do for this COVID-19, two years ago today. And in that moment, today, we began to reflect on what that has looked like, and I just want to once again talk about how proud I am of the energy and effort of our students, our staff, our families, for coming through this such a tumultuous time in our lives. We are into the third week of the new DEHEC guidelines. On March 1st, we stopped close contact tracing. On March 7th, schools began to implement what you would consider, I like to think of it as better normal, you know, it's not just normal, we've learned lessons and we've been able to implement that, and so, but we started that on March the 7th. So you'll see in our school, students are back in the lunchroom, visitors and volunteers are back in our buildings, field trips are being planned, activities are ramping up. I know they had a Lakeside Middle School had a sixth-grade welcome night the other night. Graduation is on track for the Colonial Life Arena with no restrictions, and it's been so great over the last couple of weeks as I've visited schools to see the excitement of the students, staff, and families as we return to really practices and things taking place in school that are very recognizable, and it is so exciting to be in this space. And so again, it's hard to believe that it was two years ago today, but boy, we have really come through it, and we're on the other side, and we're going to continue to make progress, so I'm thrilled for our staff and our whole school community. I mentioned last month that the new superintendent evaluation tool has really become a living document of all the incredible work that's taking place in the district. You'll find our Cognia evaluation presentation, I've got a number of these things, our implementation of mental health supports is found there, the clean financial audit, and two awards of excellence for our financial staff, the Where We Stand Wednesday communications. Although I always explain to people, I have a face made for radio, we continue to produce Where We Stand Wednesday when that's necessary. The work involved with our American Rescue Plan, Esther Funding, along with the numerous educational programs and partnerships such as Graduation Alliance, Propel Pathways with the Ed Farm as part of the Apple Corporation, as well as our LINK program that we just recently presented to you as well, just to name a few of the many important programs and experiences available to our students. So those are the things that you're starting to see fill up that document. And again, tonight, as you'll see through a number of the presentations coming up, we continue to work through the effects that COVID has had on our district and how we are supporting our schools, our employees, and our students and families. So that is, that's going to really kick us off tonight, and so it is my privilege and pleasure to once again welcome Don Hardy to us, Principal of White Knoll Elementary School, White Knoll Middle School, who's going to talk to us about the great things. You already heard a little bit of a preview in the school spotlight. That will be a new change to our board meetings, where we're going to spotlight a school and read some good stuff, and then have them present a little bit about what's taking place at their schools. So, Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board, and Dr. Little. Always appreciate the opportunity to be able to brag about White Knoll Middle School and the many different things that are going on over there. Of course, you know, this all comes down to priority school, it's about trying to grow the students, and so each year, we're trying to grow them that three percentage points on that proficiency and keep moving them above. Not going to lie, that's not been the easiest time during the last couple of years, but you know, it's nice because ever since, you know, the quarantining piece has really slowed down, you can just feel that the kids are starting to get back into some normal grooves, anxiety's starting to calm down a little bit. It is definitely making a difference with the students, and you can just feel the energy starting to build more in the school as we're able to do, as Dr. Little said, is getting back to the new normal, not just normal. So one of the first programs we've already talked a little bit about was the AVID program. It has grown drastically, parents are beating the door down. We just did students interview to be in this program for the elective, and so, in fact, one of the problems I got to figure out is I have so many kids that want to be in it, I got to figure out a way to create sections for them to get them in it, and so that's how popular it is. We do run sixth, seventh, and eighth, as far as electors bringing them up, and the beauty of it is it feeds into the high school then, because the high school's also running this AVID program. And we didn't have any students failing in the program with cohorts, they do go through and go over the grades, they go over organizations, they just talk about how do you get yourself better organized. I tell kids all the time, if a student's not doing well in school, it does not have anything to do with IQ, it's about confidence, organization, and believing you can do it. You got to believe before you can achieve, and that's why AVID is such a good program, it helps the kids to be able to have that belief and start having confidence that they can make this. So these are quotes from students, because I think if you want to hear how things are going, the best thing to do is go to the students so that you can hear what they are saying about it. And they rant and rave about it. I love the fact that it's only like two doors down from my front office, so I'm able to go down in there and see them, and it's just amazing how many of them have done different things. I can share stories of kids that didn't really, weren't really all that outgoing, but getting into AVID, they start to get more of their speech, they ran for student government, getting them involved in sports, and it's just getting them out of that shell to have a little bit more confidence with it. The next part that we're doing is our ABC Grant, this is Arts in Basic Curriculum. And so on this piece, what we do is, I always say, whenever you're teaching, you got to have a hook, and if you don't have a hook, then you're not going to engage the students. And that's one of the problems we have coming into school, was getting the kids, how do you get them engaged? How do we get them excited about school? So we are going through different trainings, in fact, we just went through one last week where the teachers met with someone to talk about how do they incorporate that arts into the regular classroom, and then the teachers developed a lesson that they are then going to implement into that classroom for this nine weeks. And again, it's about taking that core content, the math, science, English, and social studies, and giving them some hands-on experience with it, some art stuff to be able to make it real, but also have it exciting where you're not just listening and seeing numbers and words up on the board either. Positive referrals, guys, I cannot say enough, I have a lot of fun with this, because I got to be honest, whenever they come into my office, I pretend, the first comment I say to them is, you know, you've been written up, and of course, the kids are all shaking, and they're like, uh, and it's funny how many of them, I go, what do you think you got written up for? And I can't tell you how many of them look me straight in the eye, and they go, Mr. Hardy, I don't ever do anything wrong. So I know it was a positive referral, there's no way it was anything bad. And so it was just a great opportunity for them to be able to get on there, and as you guys have seen with the social media, I think it's funny, I post these on Twitter and Facebook, and we do some Instagram we're starting to pick up with, but it's funny how like if it takes me more than 24 hours to get these posted, I will have phone calls and emails from parents going, where are they at? I want to get these posted, I want to share these with family. And so it's just great to be able to see all that going on. I know, right now, we're a little over 1,300 positive referrals for the year, and so, you know, a lot of times, I think, parents get to hear the negative referrals, they don't always get to hear the positive referrals. And these aren't written just by teachers, these are also students nominating students, students nominating teachers, and then vice versa, teachers nominating teachers and teachers nominating students as well. So one of our initiatives, of course, you know, trying to grow in math and English, so we're going to focus on the number sense, and we do a variety of different things, the math puzzles we'll throw out there on a different weeks, just to be able to do some competitions with it, we'll put them in the classrooms as well. Of course, number sense is important, because kids can't be successful in math if they can't look at things and be able to go, well, if I take a two-digit number times a two-digit number, I'm pretty sure I shouldn't get an eight-digit number. Or trying to figure out what the percentage is of something, I'm pretty positive I shouldn't be saying that's 200%. You know, things like that, that we want them to have that number sense, because once they start to get that in place, that's whenever they start to get more of that problem solving in place, because they'll be able to look at it and go, that didn't work, I need to try something else. And we preach all the time, math is what's going to train you how to think, it's about solving the problems, about having the confidence to know you can do it and refusing to get up from it. Of course, literacy initiative, it's amazing how much the kids get into book clubs, if you ever go by our school, teachers and staff, all the staff has a hat, we put up what books we are reading so that they're by the door, and of course, I'm a little bit out of the ordinary, as I keep being told, but you know, I'm reading sci-fi books, I have like Star Wars up there and different books like that, or I read, there's a Dragon book that some of the kids were reading that I read. It amazes me how many of them, whenever they come into that office, start going, you read that book? I like that book, and it causes that conversation with it to be able to go on. But it's really neat how those book badges have made a difference with those kids to be able to see it, identify, or they ask questions. Of course, you know, I'm a little bit old, but some of Star Trek books are, I mean, Star Wars books that are really old, that are before some of these changes that Disney made, it's funny how they come in and ask and go, I haven't read that one, what does that do? And you get to talk about that piece with them. SOAR is an elective that we created, we had kids that were not doing well, in other words, they might have been recommended for being held back, and so we wanted to come up with something different to help them, and so the one part we're doing in the SOAR program is, this is during their academic connection classes, so this is an actual class that they will meet two times a week, and we are doing, and this is actually being done throughout the district, but it's 36 students in a program called Signition, and they separate out into groups of four, and they are working with one person on the computer that's helping them out with their math skills. This is doing tier-three intervention. So this is for kids that are really struggling, it's going to go down to where they are and try to bring them up to where they need to be. So it's very time-consuming, I'm not going to say it's the easiest on the kids, but the nice thing is, the kids are starting to see some things and how they can apply it into that regular classroom as well. In addition, we are doing what we call the Rise Up Program, this is a pilot program for reading with our students, and so we grabbed a small group of kids that were struggling, and we're working through with them, and Dr. Lett, one of the district interventionists, also comes over and works with us, and we meet with them on a regular basis, we're about ready to start collecting that data for quarter three to see how that worked, to start making decisions on what else do we want to do with it. And of course, it's smaller numbers, and we're first trying to figure it out, because we wanted to see what works, what doesn't work, what do we want to do, what can we make bigger. Our ELL students, as you know, our ELL population is growing, we serve about 20 students that we just started, thanks to the district again, starting about January, where they were able to get some funds where students can stay after school, and we got about 20 students, and it's very well-attended, those kids are there, and they have a lot of fun, but the biggest thing for them is they say, you know, it's about getting the talk, getting around people, and just be able to communicate in English and just get experience with that piece. And you know, it's funny, because those kids are some of the most well-behaved kids, they're just amazing students, they're really trying hard. I always say, I can't even imagine being in a country where I don't speak the language and trying to get comfortable with it, and these kids come regularly because they just want the excitement of trying to learn and being able to move forward. So with their SCL, this is one of the things that we've been trying to work on with our students, so we did go through and do the Terrence Metrics Test, and we ended up scoring pretty high as far as students are in distress, it's about 70%, you see sixth grade, 80%, seventh, 70%, eighth grade. This does take a long time, because for some of these students, they were actually thinking about self-harm, so of course, now we're doing those tests, we're doing them slow enough to be able to identify who they are, get them help that day, because that's not something you want to wait for, and then we work with them with counseling. Again, districts provided some opportunities to be able to help out with the counseling, give parents some choices with it to be able to deal with it. And so we do have our seven mindsets curriculum, this is the This is the curriculum that we have in the class, in the advocacy time, and it's working on trying to help them to see different scenarios. It does videos of, you know, being able to relate with people and how is that going to work? And it might show you a video of it being acted out, and then students are able to communicate with the teacher to see what they would have done. You know, of course, doing the gratitude and act of kindness and being positive and encouraging on that piece is the best part, too, as far as helping kids to see the good in things instead of the bad. And of course, part of that SCL, I worked with a lot of different kids. We have kids that are having problems with attendance, and whenever you meet with them, one of the things they struggle with the most is goal-setting. It's amazing how many of them have no goal outside of sixth grade or seventh grade or eighth grade. And so I always have to reinforce with them that if I told you to go outside and run, how long and far would you run? And of course, boys are going to tell you, they're going to run until they see the first person that they find attractive, and that's who they're going to stop and talk to. But I tell them, just add one piece to that. If I have someone down at the track that's holding $50,000, and I tell you, if you make it there within four minutes and 50 seconds, then you get to keep that money. I ask them, how hard are you going to run? Of course, kids are all, I'm going to run really hard. And I'm like, are you going to stop whenever you go around the corner and I can't see you? And they go, no. And I go, why? And they go, because you have a goal. And I go, your education is the exact same thing. If you don't have a goal for your education, whenever you get tired, whenever you get worn out, whenever people aren't seeing what you're doing, you're going to stop. And that's where I need you to dream and get that goal and set it and keep shooting for it. Tell them, you might change your dream 50 times. We also do that with the college, getting college banners all over the place. If you visit this school, there are banners everywhere. It was tough, I didn't want to let Clemson into the building, but we did let them have some of the banners in there. Of course, we continue with the Terrence Metrics. This is an ongoing thing, because even whenever you meet with a kid, like, let's say we met with a kid early on first semester, well, we're going to continue to meet with those students, because it's an ongoing process. You know, it wasn't something that was done overnight. This was things that the kids are struggling with. And a lot of times, it's things that have happened years ago that are causing these stresses, as we're trying to help out with them. Teachers can make recommendations, and they go to guidance, and then we help them to get that mental health counseling as well, even if they don't score higher in Terrence Metrics, we still pay attention to that part. All right, so our next thing is, so now that we can start doing some fun stuff that we can actually get close together, our STAR 360 data. So this is our test that allows us to know, predict what kind of proficiency we're going to have on the state test. So what we're going to be doing for the, our next quarter, so April, will be our last main test for STAR 360. Students that go up a level in achievement or increase by so many points, we are going to do what we call class-level dances, so that students can go in and celebrate their achievement in that STAR testing. And the goal of it is, they're going to know what they are shooting for, what their goal is, what they're trying to get, so they know where they're targeting. Because again, like I said earlier, if we can get them buying into their goal and making it their own, we will get success. The kids will grow. In the summer, we'll continue, we're going to do our Avid Summer School like we did last year. Again, this is bringing in students and helping them just get a feel of a lot of different Avid programs, organizations, how to study, confidence, looking at colleges, setting careers. And then we have a group of us teachers that are going to a training in Tampa, and that's actually going to be Caroline Springs, us, White Knoll High School, and I know several other schools in the district as well, are going to be there so that we can kind of tag-team to kind of plan and make some decisions to help grow, because again, we're not just one school, we're a family, and we're trying to grow everything. I know I went through pretty fast. Are any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Hardy, and have a great rest of your week.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Ms. Bazzard, you are going to, I think, introduce to us a video.
We see it's vowel.
Oh, not quite right.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Little. I'm excited, yes, I know, thank you, Megan. I'm excited to share with you how we plan to showcase the use of our district's ARP ESER funds. As a reminder, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law on March 11, 2021. The U.S. Department of Education provided an additional $121.9 billion for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, also known as the ARP ESER Fund. You might also know this as ESER III. This legislation awarded these grants to state educational agencies for the purpose of providing local educational agencies with emergency relief funds to address the impact that COVID-19 has had and continues to have on elementary and secondary schools across the nation. South Carolina was awarded $2,112,51,487. And of that, Lexington I was awarded $27,286,904. You can find our complete plan on the district's website. So to showcase these funds, we are creating a series of videos to show how the funds have given students opportunities that they otherwise would not have had. Each video will document the student impact and will include firsthand accounts from those closest to the project. A few of the upcoming projects that will be highlighted are the Signition Math Tutoring in Middle Schools, you just heard Mr. Hardy speak to that, High Dosage Literacy Tutoring in Elementary Schools, an extended day program, and our upcoming summer camps. So we have our first video for you to see tonight. This video highlights professional learning for teachers and strategies for dyslexia and other reading difficulties provided by the Special Education Department. So enjoy.
We see it's vowel consonant vowel with sneaky at the end.
The ESER funds are helping us in the literacy area, because we're able to target really where kids are deficient. We have the freedom to see what do kids truly need, and we have found a true deficiency in the area of phonemic awareness and phonics. And so we are able to target those beginning readers that are even beginning readers in upper grades. These funds help with the training, because they give us the information that we need, and this training that we have gone through has been so practical to be able to go in right in the next day and share with students. As a literacy coach, I also teach reading recovery, so I'm able to implement these strategies with our most striving readers. And I'm able to work with teachers who come to me with kids that are striving and tell them exactly what they can do and model lessons for them and demonstrate with kids. And we are growing readers by leaps and bounds.
Without that funding, we would not be able to impact educators across our entire district. Like I said, elementary, middle, and high school educators are all being affected in a positive way, which goes directly to the student the next day.
When, turn. How many syllables?
These funds are allowing people who are research-based to come into our school, to be able to provide demonstration, so that we can go straight into classrooms as a literacy coach and demonstrate for other teachers or work with students in these areas.
We are very blessed in Lexington District I to always focus on what's best for students. And through these funds, we are able to continue that tradition. This training that we are being able to go through is face-to-face training, it's giving us the opportunity to talk, it's giving the opportunity to collaborate, and to me, that's what Lexington I is all about, collaboration and coming together. So these funds are allowing us to do just that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We thought you'd like that, be a little different than a presentation. We kind of threw you a curveball. All right, Dr. Phillips is going to give us just a, I believe this is a fairly quick presentation on some strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Little. Tonight, I'll be providing a brief update on the progress of the current strategic plan as we work to accelerate and recover. And I'll also be outlining some plans for the development of our next strategic plan. As you may know, we are required to administer interim formative assessments three times per year to students in grades K through 9. At the elementary level, we administer STAR reading and I-ready math. And at the middle and high school levels, we administer STAR reading and STAR math. These test results are formative. As such, our teachers use them to monitor and adjust instruction to respond to individual student needs and to accelerate learning. As of the end of our winter interim testing window, we have some key takeaways that I'd like to share with you. First, the early elementary grades show substantial growth from fall in reading on all available measures. Text levels in the early grades are currently comparable to pre-pandemic levels. While math achievement at both elementary and secondary levels is lower than that of ELA, it appears to be consistent across grade bands with similar distributions of students meeting standard. However, growth in math at the elementary grades is less than that of reading. It should be noted that I-ready math, that the I-ready math test is new to many of our elementary students and is a bit longer than the STAR math test. There may be some effect of that in the results, but the growth from fall to spring in math seems to be a little bit behind pace based on those test results. At middle school, in both ELA and math, growth is lagging behind. Data from SCDE that compares where students are predicted to be to where they are currently shows that in middle school, the gaps in ELA are relatively consistent across grade levels, with very few students demonstrating severe gaps between their predicted and their actual performance. However, in math, the number of students with severe gaps increases with grade level. In high school, our freshmen have shown some growth in ELA, but growth in math is flat. Our AP, IB, and dual-credit enrollment, especially in grades nine and 10, continues to improve, even in the wake of the pandemic. So what we are seeing in these data aligns with what we've put into the Academic Recovery Plan. We have assembled project teams around the four goals of the Academic Recovery Plan to study and respond to these results and other data in order to facilitate the acceleration of learning. Furthermore, it is encouraging that our teachers are again afforded the opportunity for meaningful cross-district collaboration. For example, last week, our middle and high school teachers from around the district were able to collaborate on best practices for ELA and math. We need to see more of this in order to push our students ahead of the curve. Also, these results and the recommendations and actions of our project teams will help us as we plan for the development of our next strategic plan in 2022, 2023. As we mentioned earlier this year, we conducted a detailed data dig with instructional services. From that, we concluded that progress on some measures was dramatically affected by the pandemic, and some measures needed to be completely retooled. Initially, we explored the idea of rewriting the measures such that the new post-pandemic baseline would be established, against which we would compare our progress moving forward. Upon reflection, we decided this was probably not the most effective approach. Instead, we determined that we should acknowledge the reality of the pandemic's impact on student learning, leave our measures as-is, and compare our progress to the previously established pre-pandemic goals. Lessons learned through the implementation of our Academic Recovery Plan, then, will lead to the development of more relevant goals and measures for the development of the new plan in 2022, 2023. Thank you for your attention. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm sorry, no, no, go ahead. When you look at the middle school math, obviously, we have a fair number of students who take a high school-level math in middle school. Are they factored into that same, to the same numbers that you're looking at? So is that across the board?
They're factored into that, yes, sir. Whether or not they're part of those showing severe gaps, I could investigate. But in general, they're lumped in there, because they also take that interim formative assessment, and that's what we're basing these statements on.
Okay. Have we seen that enrollment drop any over the past 12, 18 months?
So in honors classes, it's sort of flattened out a little bit. And I would also add, at least, and this is just the opinion of me. Math is such that it builds upon itself every year. And so you may be seeing more of that effect of the pandemic on something like that, instead of something like ELA where a lot of the same skills are repeated just at a deeper level each year. While there's still some building in ELA, it doesn't, it's not quite as dramatic as it is in math. And again, just my assessment.
No, thank you.
And we talked about our Academic Recovery Plan. Ms. Gaskin's addresses mathematics very specifically, is that correct?
In both Goals II and III of the Academic Recovery Plan, we address math specifically in Goal II, middle school math, which is playing out to be an area where we're going to really have to continue to focus. An example that Hillary Morgan used with me is that our current fifth graders, when they were in third grade, kind of in March is when they were about to start their fractions unit. So if you think then about kind of the disruptions and the interruptions of then the fourth-grade year, and now what fifth grade has looked like for them, and how those concepts build on each other, we know that we're going to continue to see this need in upper elementary grades and in middle school grades, and that's going to have to be an area where we focus. And then again, in our third goal in the Academic Recovery Plan, we look at skills gaps across all of our content areas, including math.
Thank you. Do you have any kind of data that you could share with us, such as graphs or?
I can certainly provide you with some information, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Gaskin's got me thinking, do we feel comfortable, or are we comfortable, that the instruction that we saw pre-pandemic is close to back in place for the kids currently in third grade now? Does that make sense? Because I know, I mean, I worked in the hospital, and we've been distracted, so we are trying to get people back to, you know, what we all were very comfortable with and execute against before half our hospital was covered with COVID patients, so.
Well, we can do that in the early grades, yes. I mean, we've still had all of these interruptions to school. We are beginning to see some of that normal that you described, but in the upper elementary grades and beyond, it doesn't quite look like it used to, because they're trying to go back and capture some of those skills gaps. And so there's much more differentiation now, and teachers, say, in fifth grade are expected to teach some math concepts that they weren't teaching before.
But we're getting close to stopping the bleeding on the cause of that, that started in third grade, taking that example, no longer existing.
Right. So the cause of that, but then we've got a lot of catch-up to do.
Yeah, we got to figure out that gap analysis for those.
Absolutely. And in math, it's an issue across our state. Hillary Morgan, our mathematics coordinator, is working with leaders across the state to really understand the best way to tackle this, and it's going to be a very multifaceted approach.
Hopefully, we'll continue to look at summer programs with whatever ESER funding, just to help those kids.
We absolutely will, and we'll have an update for you on that soon. We have a lot of great things planned for next summer, this summer.
Do we have any sort of history with any situations in which we have experienced a similar learning gap? You know, take, for example, if there was a significant curriculum change, and maybe the curriculum change didn't turn out how we wanted, or how, do we have anything that we can pull from to?
Yeah.
Not at this level.
Not at this extent, obviously.
There have definitely been some changes in like state testing, where we've seen an increase in rigor and that sort of thing, where we've been able to make that up in a year or two, but nothing.
Nothing is. Well, yeah, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Phillips. And it is my pleasure to welcome Dr. Thomas Rivers, who's going to talk to us a little bit about, this is an important season about registration and preparing for next year, and he's going to talk to us a little bit about the, a new functionality that we will have from Power School called the Parent Portal, as well as online registration. So, Dr. Rivers.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Little, Madam Chair, School Board members. My pleasure to share with you this evening two presentations. The first one I'm going to go over is online registration statistics, and it's just information about where we've been and where we are now when it comes to online registration. It is that season, it's hard to believe that we are in the spring season, getting ready for next school year, and these things are vital to what we do here in Lexington I and the school district. It's a collaboration between IT and communications to make these things happen, from the Parent Portal to online registration. So thanks to the IT team and the Thieser Briggs, Derek Berry is here today, too, representing that team, as well as Catherine McPhail and her team to make online registration happen. So the first thing is, we had a goal many, many years ago now. If you think back to 10 years ago or so, how we used to do registration, you fill out the paper packet, take it to school, waiting long lines, alphabetical order sometimes, or alphabet, and it could take hours to get through registration. So we implemented with a goal of trying to have a contactless method registering students for schools, and to pay fees online as well. And so that kicked off. And so that kicked off. Collect key student information to support our students and how we operate schools and reduce the processes of data entry in schools. And so by doing online registration, it makes it easier to get that information into the system without someone keying in, less errors, as well as reduce paper. And that was a big goal of online registration at the time. And so then some quick facts about online registration. We started officially in 2014, 15. That's when we kicked it off. And the forms and the packet grows larger each and every year. There are more forms our parents and students have to fill out to complete. And so this helps us keep everything organized. With our online registration, families get a unique SNAP code, and that allows them to log into the system, to start the process, and we are constantly making improvements to the system to make it easier. It's also available in Spanish for many of our families, and that data is collected to use and update our power school system. So you can change and update your phone numbers, important information about contact information, doing that process, and that saves time because you can do it right from the comfort of your home, your laptop or mobile device. Okay. So in 2014, when we kicked this off, you can kind of see this bar graph here of participation across the district. And so started out on the low end, but we quickly got our parents on board through the years, and we write now around, right around 90% of our parents participating in online registration. Had a small dip in the last two years, about 2%, but for the most part, 90% of the parents and families in Lexington One are doing it online. The next graph will show you breakdown by school and by levels. And so that one is a little bit harder to kind of see, but you can look at the schools, elementary schools in Lexington One, and the participation of families through the years at those schools in that particular graph. This one gives you the percentage in numbers, so same information for elementary schools. And so what we try to do is circle in a darker kind of line, the higher participation rate at several schools. And so from 2014 until 2021, you see Meadow Glen Elementary School, high participation midway, New Providence, closing out those last few years. And then we also circle schools that have, had a lower participation in the beginning. The good thing to note that as we've gotten closer to the present time, 21, 22, we have 80% of our families and above completing online registration at all of our schools. And so that's where we are now. And some schools are as high as 90, close to 98%. And so that's for the elementary schools. Middle school, same representation in the bar graph through the years from 2014 and up until present time, 21, 22. And again, we did the same thing in the darker circle around the percentage numbers for schools. Meadow Glen Middle School, Pleasant Hill Middle School through the years had a higher participation. And then in the beginning, Pillion Middle School, but they quickly moved up into that 85 and 82% range far as participation and online registration. High school, same representation there. You can look at the five high schools there from Gilbert to White Knoll High School in participation in the bar graph. And again, we provided you the numbers for those schools. For River Bluff, had a higher participation for those number of years. Pillion starting out, they quickly gained and caught up in Gilbert High School as well. And so you see those circles there giving you participation. So what we want to do now at this point is kind of wonders. So we had that dip for two years in participation, kind of doing those COVID years, just by 2%. So not too significant there, but we also still have 10% of our families not doing it online, coming into school, completing paperwork or some other method. And so we're trying to track that as well. And so in some of our attendance zone, if you notice that as well, that some areas in Lexington One had a lower participation compared to other areas. So we want to kind of analyze that and see if we can make some more improvements in the years to come with that. And so our next steps is kind of gather a working group, get some school voice to get some input, talk about improvements, standardize some things as far as to make sure, enhance our marketing, make apparent friendly instructions, highlight opportunities for families and students to complete it. And so those are things that we'll kind of discuss to see if we can make those tweaks and improvements to capture that 10% that we're, we're missing right now, to make sure we can have that impact. So that's kind of the update on the online registration part. So I'll pause for any questions or reflections from anyone on the board. Okay, I'll keep moving. Let's go on to the next one. If we get that back up. Just trying to open up the new file. There you go. Okay. So if you just remember what I just said, make something that's kind of parent friendly that will help and, and make it easy for our parents to figure out how to log onto their Power School parent portal. So those kinds of things can be helpful far as the instructions. A lot of times when you are trying to do something for the first time, you don't know what it looks like. What am I, what do I have to fill out? And so what we wanted to do in this attempt is to make sure all of our parents, number one, have a parent portal account in Power School. Right now, we have about 13,000 families that don't have access or not on the Power School parent portal account. And that's where you can do a number of things. Check your child's attendance, check their grades, sometimes before they even come home. So those are some advantages to having that parent portal account, that you can get that information right, right away. So in collaboration with the communications department, we created this slide presentation here that will be available to parents online. We're going to send out an email next Monday with these instructions on setting up your parent account, and we will also be able to send it to all the families that don't have access to one now, have not set it up. Families that have one, they will not get their unique access ID and access password because they already have an account. So next week, on Monday, we'll get this information out, and parents will go through this process here, and these are the instructions to set up your account. So we're announcing a night, tonight, so you can have this information, so you're aware of what's coming. So you get that unique access ID and access password for your child's Power School account or parent portal. And this is what the screen will look like here, so it's kind of a parent friendly version. You're going to log on to powerschool.com backslash public, and you're going to go to that link there, use that access ID and, and password information to log on to the account. Step two. And that's step two. Once you end there, step three, once you end there, you click on create an account. And so you click that link there, and it'll take you to this page where you can fill out the information far as your name, first and last name, email address, and you create your own user ID, desired user ID and password, and, and you re-enter that and go through that process. And so what we're trying to do with a number of things that are coming up, parents will need their parent portal access first before they can complete some of the surveys that we will have. If you notice that we will always collect bus information from parents, and in the past, we've sent out Google surveys, a Google survey link to do this or to get information. And sometimes with a Google survey link, you gotta fill in all your identifying information again. Name, address, phone numbers, contact information. By having this embedded in Power School, all that information will already be there, so all you will answer is a question. Do you need bus transportation? Yes or no? And so at some point, we will have forms available online through Power School for all of our families. It will simplify the process. All the information will be in one place for us to gather the identifying information for our students and families without filling it out because it's already connected through that online registration process. So you will just really check yes or no. Do you want Lula? Yes or no? Do you want bus transportation next school year? Yes or no? And that's it. So once you get your parent portal established, you go to the forms link and you answer a simple question instead of that Google survey link that we've been doing for years, which becomes cumbersome. We gotta take that information from Google survey, then import it into Power School. Now, we don't have to do that. Once our parents have access to the parent portal, they can click it and we have information right there. So that's what we're showcasing tonight for all of our parents, and then this information will go out on next, next Monday for our parents to set up their parent portal account in Power School. Questions?
Dr. Rivers, hey, I have a question.
Okay.
So this parent portal, is that something that your office developed or is that part of Power School?
It's part of Power School.
Okay. So you're kind of tapping into that.
Yes. It's al, it's always been there for our parents, and many, half of our families have access now. But what Power School is now making more available is in Power School, that forms area, it allows us to survey our parents faster and easier. So to do that, we gotta get all of our parents on board so that they can complete those surveys. And so the first step is this parent portal, and then after that, we'll provide more instructions on the surveys when they come out.
Okay. Do we know when registration is going to open this year?
Not yet. We will announce that in the coming, coming weeks to let families know, but it'll be over the summer when we'll make those announcements through communications.
Okay. Thank you.
And that form section, is that just for surveys or will it actually have the ability to upload district forms or things of that nature?
There will be an area. Derek is here to kind of be my go-to, first and two. We talked about that. There will be opportunities for parents to upload information through Power School. Is that correct, Derek?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, I knew you said it. So yes, there will be opportunities to kind of do those things as well, so we can upload, your parents can upload information, and all those things will make it easier for our families.
Yeah, I guess I, I think about a lot of things we encounter, medication administration forms for school nurses, even athletics, you know, the school pre-sports participation forms, the concussion return to play forums. I mean, these are available online, but they can obviously be a little clunky and difficult to find at times. So I, I see, this platform allows for the district to load those forms on, for a parent to then download, fill out, and then re-upload, I guess.
Yeah, so much is going to now mobile devices. So I would imagine almost everyone in this room and out there, they have a cell phone. So in many cases, you're going to take a picture of your form or any kind of medical documentation, and you can probably capture that picture and then put it into Power School that way too.
And I would advocate for permission slips. That is a thing for parents, is permission slips that are smushed down in the bottom of a bookbag, even for 17-year-olds.
Yes.
You know, that you get the frantic, hey, you know, didn't bring in permission slip? Well, I guess you're staying at school. I don't know. But just that, that would be a suggestion from a parent that's almost done with this journey.
It will be available in that form section as well, so schools will have access to it also, to individualize a form for their school, for their students too. So in many cases, I would imagine the next few years, you may not have any forms going home. Parents will be able to go into their, use their mobile device and check, yes, my child can attend, and go in that filter.
Bookbags will be much cleaner. Less stuff smushed in the bottom. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. I, I appreciate the fact we continue to streamline this process and, and, and utilize Power School to make it easier for our parents to engage in the work. So nicely done. Fantastic. Thank you for you and your team. All right, Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Dr. Little, Madam Chair, members of the board. Excited to be here another month to provide a operations update for facility improvements continuing to occur here in Lexington One. I look forward to showing you more progress on our work. First, Gilbert Middle School, the four classroom addition there is progressing nicely. This picture here shows the brickwork there is substantially complete, roofing as well as substantially complete. The two voids you see here are for the windows and louver units. We continue to fight lead time issues with windows, more so than anything else, really. So our contractors are working through that as best they can, but not slowing down the work, finding ways to continue on even with those delays. Inside of the, one of the classrooms at Gilbert Middle School, you see the joists and roofing is complete. This is the, the void for the window that I discussed with you earlier. Also over here, you see this is for the mechanical unit installation that will occur here fairly soon, once that space gets dried in. This photo here shows down the corridor, the four classroom addition. There are group restrooms located here, and as far as this addition, anytime you add square footage, you need to make sure and add those facilities for student and staff use. So to the left and to the right of the corridor, there will be group restrooms along with some storage space for the school to utilize, always a, a key component too, anytime we do any kind of addition. Next on the list, the fine arts addition and athletic addition at Gilbert High School. We actually took the school team on a tour of this space last week, and you know, we're, we're excited to hear their feedback and, and hear their excitement over, you know, soon moving in and utilizing this, this wonderful addition to Gilbert High School. You'll see in this photo, roof decking has started. That's always a, a key milestone, any kind of construction project, to see that roof starting to go on. So that is happening as we speak. Here's a front image of the performing arts center. That will soon be the main entrance coming in here from the, the parking lot, which is out, out here, moving towards the, the addition. The foyer area will be right here, lobby area, right out in front of the, the theater. You see a lot of the, the windows are completed and the corridor here that we referenced last month, looks, looks complete, substantially complete from the outside. Moving to the wrestling room addition at Gilbert High School, duck work is being installed here. You see at the top here at the roof joists, the, the duck work going in, mechanical units installation will be occurring soon. Walls have been painted. It's always a good sign too to see that that's occurring there. And windows, at Gilbert High School, they were able to, to defeat some lead time issues and get the majority of the windows installed there. Next on our list tonight, Carana Springs Middle School. Final inspection here is occurring very soon for, first of next month for the sixth classroom addition at Carana Springs Middle. You'll see here, this photo really shows you what it looks like and really is at this point, a completed project. Moving inside the addition, you see a completed space, BCT installed there to match the existing school casework, you know, for the teacher and staff to utilize, mechanical units installed, ceilings in, lighting's in. This space is ready. Next, our transportation facility. I wanted to provide a few photos this month to show you that we have, at this point, removed structures that were on that site, and we received the permitting necessary and, and got all the work done and paperwork necessary for our contract to remove the two structures that were on the site. You see in this photo from a couple of days ago that it had started. Well, it didn't take them very long to get those buildings down and get them removed from the site. So if you drive by there tomorrow, you'll see that they are gone, providing, providing for necessary site work and continued construction to occur. That was probably about 10 minutes later, and it doesn't, it doesn't take very long once they start swinging those big pieces of equipment. White Knoll High School, excited for this space and what it's going to mean for that community. You'll see the, I wanted to show this week, this aerial view, the, the brickwork here encasing what'll be the, the front entry and the steps leading up to the fine arts center. You see that there'll be, you know, circulation space over here and then some connection to access pass around the performing arts center for safe travels. You'll notice that at White Knoll, you really won't see a lot of, you know, differences from, from last month, but we're kind of closing, closing this one out. Final punch list items are occurring at White Knoll High School. You know, once again, seats are installed, the laminate's installed, curtains in, really just putting some, some final touches on, on the addition, which will be inspected for occupancy next month, along with Carana Springs Middle. One thing I did want to point out for White Knoll High School that, that you haven't seen yet is the installation of the orchestra pit that is occurring now. This, this design is really new in Lexington One, but has been utilized by other districts in the state. We actually made some visits to other fine arts centers before we decided to go this route. This is a safe pit orchestra, provides a secure space for the musicians to, to set up and perform in this pit. This is actually a walkable surface here that goes on top, this grid, and there'll be a, a removable hatch for the director, you know, right in here. That can be taken out for the director to stand and be able to, to, you know, make contact with the performers on stage and also lead their performers in the orchestra pit. And also what's really neat about this is when this is not in use, this will actually be covered with, with painted plywood that'll match the stage. So it'll actually be an extension of the stage, you know, when it's not in use. So it'll make for a very large stage space for the, the school performers to utilize, you know, whenever they're having their performances. We'll be doing this at Gilbert High School as well. That'll be the same design. Then, Streamer White Knoll High School, you see substantially complete. You know, I wanted to highlight our, our honoree from, from earlier. You know, I know she'd be very thrilled to see this in our, in our school. You know, I know she'd be very thrilled to see this in our school district and as we're doing in other schools as well. You see the floors installed there, windows, the bars are installed. Completed space. Right next door to that dance room and Performing Arts Center, you'll see one of the dressing rooms, carpeting's in. Countertop mirrors are installed. Something new for you, this month, the Saks Capital Elementary School, we started work there last summer. We have some more to do this coming summer, but in the meantime, we're currently constructing their storage building, much like we've done at other schools, New Providence, LES, several others as well. So school is excited to have that space here very soon to utilize. Next on tonight's list is the widening of Old Cherokee Road as part of the Lakeside Middle School project. You'll notice a substantial amount of the utility work and site work has been completed along both sides of Old Cherokee Road. The next phase in this project is the asphalt, which will soon be occurring, you know, moving down the road to complete, to complete that work. A little bit more of a bird's eye view of, right here, you'll see this is the entrance here to Lakeside off of Old Cherokee, this has already been paved and you see heading all the way down here to Pilgrim and then out to number six here is, that grading work has been completed. Last on tonight's list, you know, Lakeside Middle School. We are, you know, asphalt and striping is down. I'll show you an aerial view here in a second of that work. Back parking lots are paved, majority of the landscape work is done. This shows that, you see, like I said, the, you know, the front parking lot closest to the school has been paved and striped. Parking lot here for, you know, athletic and fine arts use has been paved and striped. A lot of the landscaping has been done, trees have been planted, sod's been put down, irrigation is rolling out there, so a lot of our access pass, like Mr. Salters talked about, you know, connection points to the neighborhood, you know, that is here and installed, you know, for the neighborhood to utilize if they choose to do so. Palmetto Hall right next door. And also the access pass and walk, you know, sidewalks around the parking lot are completed. I did want to show this photo here, you've seen the completed gym already, you know, and and so that's been done for a while now, but this was just installed here recently. This is a gym divider curtain, you know, it's a neat addition that we've started at Beechwood Middle School. We did it at New Pillion Middle. That curtain can come down and allow multiple sports to practice simultaneously in the gym, whether it's volleyball and basketball or, you know, girls' basketball and boys' basketball, whatever it is going on, you can bring that gym, you can even do that during P-class, provide that separation and utilize both sides of the court without any interference. Front office here, you see carpet, you know, once again is down, casework is in, painting's done. It's a, it's ready for furniture. Want to show the seats, they were installed recently at Lakeside Middle. See, those are protected, you know, right now currently with plastic as final touches are being done, but the seats in the auditorium are installed. Another view here, just putting on some final touches. Lakeside Middle School, all the sound panels are in. Carpet is in, in the theater. Here we have the learning commons space, carpet is in, you know, once again, as it is throughout the school. That space also is ready for furniture and bookshelves and other items for the learning commons. All right, that's the conclusion of our update for tonight. Questions?
I just have one question. Once the pack is completed at White Nile High School, will those buses remain parked there until the transportation facility is completed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warren, and Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Little, and now we're moving on to item ten point O, which is citizens' participation. Lexington County School District One's Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the board provides a citizens' participation period during board meetings. In order to speak, you must be a parent or legal guardian of a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, a taxpayer residing in the Lexington District One attendance area, an employee of the district, or a student currently attending a Lexington District One school. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, or programs. You may not speak about or name specific individuals, whether students or school or district staff. Failure to follow this rule will result in immediate loss of the opportunity to speak. We want to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. We want to give everyone who came tonight an opportunity to speak and in order to do that, I will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern at the back of the room. The board will not reply to your remarks nor take any action during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. You may address the board for up to three minutes. If you have any handouts you would like for the board to review, please give them to Mrs. Halliday in the back of the room and she will distribute them. Please do not clap or make any comments either while an individual speaks or after he or she finishes. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. That card asks for your name, address, and other information. However, I will read only your name, the town you reside in, and the name of the schools your children attend when it is your turn to speak. If you are unable to attend this meeting this evening or are uncomfortable addressing the board in person, you may reach out to us by email, telephone, or mail and our contact information is available on the Lexington District One website. We do welcome all messages.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt for just a moment. At our last meeting, I did point out to the board that our board policy allows fifteen minutes for citizens' participation. We chose to ignore that. I'm in the middle of taking some parliamentary procedure classes and have something I want to share with the board, and this is parliamentary procedure. Most organizations have conducted activities in a certain way for so long that they have become tradition or custom. Many times custom takes on character of a rule even though it was never formally adopted by the group. Customs are fine as long as they are not in conflict with the bylaws or other rules and as long as no one questions them. When a custom is in conflict with a rule, the custom must be set aside until the rule is amended to include the custom. Proceed at your own, whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and I do believe that the citizens' participation policy is going to be part of the ad hoc committee's review, is that correct, Dr. Guyton?
Yeah, so within our, within the scope of the ad hoc committee, this is one of the policies that falls within that. And Mr. Anderson, I, you know, I would certainly like to sit and hear, you know, all of the concerns that you may have along with any of the other board members that are not on the committee prior to our review of that. And we can certainly take all of those things into consideration as we bring forth a recommendation back to the board.
Thank you. And we have seven speakers tonight, which is twenty-one minutes, give or take, so I think we'll... Well, Mr. Anderson, I am going to continue, I don't, I'm not a fan of changing midstream, and so... Thank you very much. First, we have Mr. Aaron Grenade, and he is a resident of Lexington and wants to speak about the future of COVID policies and the board response and First Amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Dr. Little, and members of the board. Actually, I've been struggling all day and changed my mind twice and it just changed one direction two seconds ago and just changed back by the response you just heard. I'm actually, I think what just occurred just now speaks volumes to the nature of who is in the right and who is not in all of these situations. I don't think I have to say anymore about that. The thing I was struggling with was the difference in talking at you and about you, to you, but instead just having a conversation to you. With everything we've been through the past few years, there's a lot of upset parents and that's understandable. I agree with just about all of it. Sometimes the responses and the reactions are not as appropriate in a parliamentary setting and I agree that when things are out of order, they should be taken. What we saw last month, actually the secretary was out of order also and it seems kind of hypocritical to me. That's not, it doesn't seem that way, it is, and I emailed you according to that. I'm going to move on. The change of heart I had was more about why we do what we do rather than me just talking about various things. There's a story in the Bible about Abraham sending away Hagar and Ishmael, his son, and they get out in the wilderness and they're about to die. They're starved, they're thirsty, their water has run out. The little boy, she puts him away so she doesn't have to watch him die. And he's weeping and she goes and sits under a tree and she's weeping. And an angel comes and says, "The Lord has heard the voice of the lad." He says, "Now pick up your child and go, I'm going to provide for you." God is sensitive to our children in this area and I am too, and I know these parents are. The heart of these parents is, these are their babies. And so then God says, "Take up your child," and that's what they're doing. Sometimes it comes across as bombastic, sometimes it comes as brash, but at the heart of it is always protection of their babies, of my babies. So that being said, I just wanted to say, these are my kids. These are not the school district's kids, not a teacher's kids. I was teaching my child long before I put him in public school. And so as a Papa Bear, that is where I come from. And sometimes it's important to hear it from the heart of someone who's not upset necessarily at the moment. So just understand that these are coming from our heart. The last thing I did want to say, and I kind of wish that the secretary of the board was still in here for this. I sat about as far away from you as I am now from our former president Donald Trump over the weekend and he made a wonderful statement, it says, "Without the First Amendment, we have no country." This is the only opportunity for citizens to consult with the board. I would love for you to extend this time and provide other opportunities, maybe outside of a board meeting for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Catherine Reynolds, and she lives in Lexington and is going to speak to us about policy.
Evening, actually. So I just, again, would like to offer up to any parent within the district that would like to me to do, address the board on their behalf if they're not able to. And actually, as I came in tonight, I was able to receive something from someone that they would like me to read it, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. Says, "I'm very so very thankful that we have been put COVID behind us and can have, get back to normal in schools. Board, I trust you are going to put parameters in place and never again let our schools be controlled by governmental agency and that you will never again reward a child for getting experimental injection that over twelve hundred side effects in the Pfizer jab alone. I've heard an announcement that Lakeside Middle is going to become an EL school. I know that we already have one, some in the district, but this, but just this past week, I took the time to explore EL Learning website. Many things concerned me, but I only have time to talk about one titled, "Affirming Gender Identities in Crew." Quote, "The students in Erica Young's sixth to eighth grade crew at Amanna Academy in Alpharetta, Georgia, discuss gender identities and how crew can affirm them. EL education respects and honors your child, your gender identity. Gender identity is how you identify and see yourself. Everyone gets to decide their gender identity themselves. You may identify yourself, identify as a girl, boy, woman, or man. You do not feel like, if you do not feel like a boy, girl, man, or woman, you might identify as a gender, gender queer, non-binary, gender non-conforming, or exclusively as a person. If your identify, identity matches the sex assigned at birth, then you're a, you are a cisgender. If your gender identify does not match the sex identified, assigned at birth, maybe you, you may be transgender. An ally is a person who might not be LGBTQ, but shows support for people, those people, and promotes equality in a variety of ways. You have the right to identify however you want and identify should be respected. The problem is, honestly, this should be something that a counselor or something like that should be taken care of, not a crew."
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Next, we have Ms. Dana Holmesley, she lives in Lexington and wants to speak about board accountability.
A citizen spoke at the last meeting praising the board in this district. He said that he had attended board meetings for the last two months. During that time, he was able to come up with a glowing analysis of the board. I have attended all board meetings since May of last year and I can tell you that sitting in this auditorium as a member of the audience is a lot different than watching the live stream. I can tell you that I've seen and heard a lot of things that I wouldn't have been able to observe had I not been physically present. Attending two meetings and giving an assessment isn't really a fair assessment, especially given the history of this board. It's worth mentioning that shortly after this gentleman addressed the board, the chairwoman took social media...
Ms. Holmesley, Ms. Holmesley, I'm going to stop you because you're talking about a member of the community, thank you.
Okay, I'll go on. Anyway, that got me thinking about the word dedication. When I think about Lexington One, I think about all the amazing people we have in this district. I think about the teachers, principals, custodians, cafeteria workers, maintenance workers, the resource officers, nurses, and bus drivers. It got me also thinking about how much time, effort, and especially the dedication they put in this district and our children, showing up for our kids every single day. All of our board members were here tonight. I appreciate the ones who have stayed to hear the citizens speak. However, as you may already know, one board member who seems to show out more than he shows up. Mr. Anderson has missed graduations, conferences, strategic planning updates, and a board self-assessment, just to name a few. Mr. Anderson has missed a total of seven meetings since his reelection in 2020. Seven out of twenty-one meetings. That's a sixty-seven percent achievement rate, which would be a D if we're using Lexington One's grading scale. Maybe this is alarming to this board because recent statistics shows that fifty-three point two percent of our students are reading below grade level and fifty-eight point five percent of students below grade level in math. In other words, more than half of our students are performing below grade level in English and math. What's even more alarming is that these numbers have only slightly decreased since 2019. Prior to COVID, only a little more than half of our students were performing at above grade level. How is this acceptable for the self-proclaimed best district in the state to have over half their kids behind in reading and math? Can any of you tell me how much money is making it into the classroom? How many administrative positions have been added to the district office in the last couple of years? How many principals and assistant principals have left? How many teachers have called it quits? If Mr. Anderson were a student, he would have failed due to excessive accents shortly after making the grade in November of 2020. Yet this board continues to reward him by appointing him to the Educational Foundation Board, appointing him to committees and allowing him to continue to serve as an officer of the board. Where is the discipline? If this sounds familiar, it's because this is what takes place in our schools every day, lack of discipline and disregard for the rules with no consequences. And when teachers speak out, they are reprimanded and subdued ways as to not make it obvious. Our teachers deserve better, our students deserve better, and this community demands better from you. Board members who are elected to serve the community, justice delayed is justice denied. It's never too late to do the right thing.
Next, we have Ms. Katie Carter Jeffcoat, she lives in Lexington and wants to speak about board accountability.
I was just going to finish Ms. Holmesley's speech. Over the past year, speaking as Ms. Holmesley, I have emailed Mr. Anderson on multiple occasions. Most recently, I sent an email about the meeting minutes, which are his responsibility as board secretary. After a couple of weeks with no response, I decided to give him a call. However, his phone number and address have been removed from the district's website, so email is the only means that his constituents have to reach him. In fact, four members of this board have removed their home address from the district website within the last few months. Mr. Anderson is the only board member who does not have his phone number or home address listed. When I asked the board chair why Mr. Anderson is not returning his emails to his constituents, she offered to answer those emails on his behalf, and while I'm sure she was trying to be helpful, which I appreciate, it should be of great concern to all that a board member has been, who has been elected and trusted by his fellow constituents to serve as a board officer, by his fellow board members, to serve as a board officer refuses to do the job he was elected to do. a board officer refuses to do the job he was elected to do. We have just come off of two historically difficult years for this district. We need board members who are engaged, active, dedicated to the educational and community goals of this district. Not attending board meetings, graduations, ignoring constituents who reach out with questions, telling them to move from the district if they have concerns, kicking parents out of meetings is not conduct becoming of a board, of a board member of this district. After reading that, I want to just give a few of my own comments. It's time that we start caring more about the well-being of the people in this district more than our reputation as a district. Honestly, we need a culture change in this district. A change from conflict management with its stakeholders to collaboration. And the change starts at the top. How can this board work as a collaborative body if every single individual sitting up there tonight, or who have just left, is not fulfilling the duties they were elected to fulfill? Accountability isn't easy, and it's not comfortable. It's not fun standing up here every week, every month. But it's necessary for this board to move forward and for this district and for our students and teachers to start putting together the pieces that we have been left after these long two years. What is this board going to do from this point forward to give us, the voting citizens of Lexington One, confidence that every member of our school board is dedicated to doing the work of a school board member with conduct that reflects the values of this great community? Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Murray Kindred. He lives in Lexington and wants to speak about our schools.
I want to begin tonight by addressing some things that I've heard, have been said about, or speculated about, my reasons for being here. I'm a plant. No one has put me here. I'm paid, although I would like to be, I'm not. But more importantly than me is who else is not paid to be here tonight. And that's the board members sitting in front of you. Because for those of you that don't know, that are watching at home, out of all the school districts in the state of South Carolina, there are 30 who don't pay their school board members. And we are one of those 30. So it makes these people what is referred to as volunteers. They volunteer their time to go into the schools, meet with administrators, teachers, students, to try to improve the lives of all of those people. Because as much as schools are about children, and they are, there are other people that make up schools. Some of them seated around the room tonight, many, many more will be in the classroom tomorrow morning. They are the same people that volunteer to go to graduations, to celebrate the accomplishments and the achievements of so many, not their own. And for that, tonight, I say thank you. To Dr. Little and his staff, I say thank you tonight for providing realtors and those people that are selling property, the free advertisement. What am I talking about? Pick up a real estate ad, and after square footage, a number of bathrooms, what's the next thing you see? Zoned for Lexington School District One. Why? Because we are the best, and everybody knows it. And I want to address one other thing tonight that I understand I've been referred to, and that is cheerleader dude. And let me say, although I find it disrespectful that those people would talk about young people that participate in activity in a negative fashion like that, I choose to take it as a positive. Because if coming here tonight and saying thank you to this board makes me a cheerleader, I'll wear it. If coming here tonight saying thank you to Dr. Little and his staff makes me a cheerleader, I'll wear it. The same for the principals and the administrators in this district, the teachers, the support staff, the school bus drivers. If that makes me a cheerleader, so be it. I'm a cheerleader. And here's the other thing. I'm not alone on this team. There are many, many others in this community that feel the way I do. And I want to end tonight with Psalm 118:24. "The Lord has made this day, and we will rejoice and be glad of it." Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Debbie Hime. She lives in Lexington and wants to speak about the board.
Hey, just so it's clear, elected officials are not volunteers. Whether they set policy to pay themselves or not is irrelevant. They're elected officials, and with that comes responsibility. Good evening. Let's talk about money, specifically credit card statements. This needs your immediate attention. Two months ago, I spoke. I got completely ignored, even after sending follow-up emails, completely ignored. That's now a legal matter. It's your job to make sure that your employee, the superintendent, who is sitting right in the middle of y'all, which is completely inappropriate, but it's your job to make sure that your employee is following policy and law and that the financials in this district are regularly monitored. That means you have to look at them. When the folks under him aren't doing their job, he needs to fix it or make a good fire. But the buck stops with you, board. You are in charge, and when you've made a bad hire, in Little, you should make a good fire. Recently, I foiled all 107 credit card statements for all of 2021. Guess how much that costs? I have no idea either, because the determination letter, which under FOIA law, quote, "Must constitute the final opinion of the public body," you. It says to get credit card statements, the cost would be significant. How do I pay that? By the way, they've had no problem in the past telling me fees would be in excess of $23,000, $21,000, and $18,000 for large purchasing orders. Priced out for financial information, big surprise. Who writes these FOIA letters and emails anyway? Here, no, that's not it. It's this one about the credit card statements. But my question is, who writes them anyway? Is it really like the district website says? A lady named Dan O'Kane? Or is it David? Because once, my husband received an email from Ms. O'Kane, but it was signed David. And I'm wondering if this is David Duff, who the district relies on for legal advice, and who recently spoke for an adj- ... I didn't stop my time, please. We've been here before, a lot. This is ridiculous.
You're speaking about a staff member, though, as well.
Is David Duff your staff, or do you contract out with him?
You referred to another staff member in your comments.
I referred to an attorney who spoke at a public meeting. He spoke at a public meeting, Ms. Green.
Ma'am, you said another name.
I would really like my time back. I can say names, Ms. Green. Maybe this district should reevaluate that relationship. As the saying goes, it's never too late to do the right thing. But there's this thing called Appropriations Act. You see, sometimes our legislators make good laws for open and transparent government. It says, quote, "Each school district must maintain on its internet website a copy of each monthly statement for all of the credit cards maintained by the entity, including credit cards issued to officers or employees for official use. The card number on each statement must be redacted prior to posting. Each card statement must be posted not later than 30 days, blah, blah, blah." That's pretty plain language. We don't need legal advice to understand that, or do you, Ms. Green? And then it gets even better. The letter from Ms. O'Kane actually quoted from that same Appropriations Act, the same section 1.25, except she quoted the part about expenditures. There are four sentences that separate these sections. Seriously, you can't make this up. Oh, and our district credit cards, all 107, are not even issued to particular people. The FOIA response says the cards can be used by, quote, "Any employee in the district if authorized," but they don't have a list of people who've used them, even though I foiled that. This district refused to give a list of people who have used credit, district credit cards last year. Let that sink in. And look at this. This is Richland District One. This is their credit card statement with the numbers redacted. This is what I'm looking for. You break state laws a lot. It's about finances a lot.
Next, we have Mr. Matt H-
Y'all better do something about it this time.
Government's just people. For months now, we've been coming to board meetings expressing concerns with bullying, education, being open and transparent. I sent Dr. Guyton and Mintz Hasen an email with a concern after a January board meeting, still without a reply. This board, with the exception of Ms. Garrus, is not serving the kids or the people. Ask any parent how they think and feel about Ms. Garrus, and they will tell you, "I wish the whole board was her." Don't believe me? So start asking around. She is here listening to the people. How does the rest of this board treat Ms. Garrus? Very poorly, to the point of open scorn at times, keeping financial documents away from her and trying to deny her legal right to put anything she wants in the minutes, should be impeachable. You do not get to control another board member's rights as an elected official, and you should not even try to. Just as Rome is the people, this board is the people. We are awake. We are paying attention. We are here to hold you accountable. We also have clean hands. We've done nothing wrong. I have collected hundreds of stories from parents, teachers, cafeteria staffs, and kids about how they feel about this board in this district. Your employees are afraid to speak out because this district is retaliatory. Don't believe me? I know this firsthand. I was told I could not help as a volunteer wrestling coach this season by an athletic director who I've never met before, who told me, "We have decided you are not fit to help coach anymore." I asked him who we are. He said, "I mean, me. I made that decision." And after I asked him what I did, he had no answer. I missed an entire season of working with my two sons. I will never get that back. This all happened around the time of end of last April, when I started coming to these meetings on behalf of the kids in the wrestling team so I could be their voice and tell you how they feel about school COVID restrictions and the prison-like control there. When they found out I was not helping coach this year, they thanked me for trying to help. They also told me it opened their eyes. Some of these kids will be voting in November. I encourage each board member to visit the classrooms of your choosing and speak with the teachers and ask follow-up questions to get the real story. Ask them if they are afraid to speak out because of fear of retaliation. Ask someone from Rocky Creek Elementary School why Dr. Little spoke with the staff two days in a row after the principal and assistant principal left earlier this, earlier this year. There are stories these employees wanted to tell you, and it's your duty to go collect them. To the public, if your kids used to attend these schools, speak with the current students. Compare notes and experiences. They're not the same. Lexington High School is not at a single dance this year because the steward of Lexington High will not allow dances. I know the steward of Lexington High also follows orders from the eighth unelected board member sitting in the middle. Seriously, what high school does not have dances? Policies at schools are not being followed properly. A week and a half ago, I had to send an email to an administrator sitting over there, second from the right, about a pizza my son was not allowed to bring into Lexington High School. Seriously, a pizza. I had to send an email about a pizza he could not take into a high school. Why on earth does the school think he can control what food my eat, kid eats at high school? So, when you see public, see pissed off parents at the school, that's why. Ask elementary school kids if they like drinking the lukewarm water out of some of the faucets there because the water fountains were shut down. Don't fall for the district's response as they're trying to deny or cover this up. Ask the kids directly. See what they have to say. Thank you.
All right. I believe that is everybody tonight. We are going to move on to new business. And we have, I believe, Mr. Cooper and Dr. Clamp are going to present on the dress code. Are you, do you want to introduce this?
Well, let me just say, Dr. Clamp, Mr. Cooper, thank you for being here tonight and sticking with us here at nine o'clock. They have had quite the journey over the last few months. I think they've interviewed a number of people and are working, have been working on this, I think, since December-ish, and maybe, maybe November. And I just wanted, they wanted, so tonight is, from a policy perspective, what needs to happen is, consider this the introduction of a larger, so you still have the first reading next time, and then the second reading. But because they have some context and how they collected some of the feedback to create the policy, they're going to do a little more tonight than what we typically do during an introduction. So, Dr. Clamp or Mr. Cooper, I'm not sure which one is first. If you go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Dr. Little, Madam Chair, members of the board. Excited tonight to partner with Mr. Cooper from Student Services, as Instructional Services and Student Services have collaborated with a number of people to bring to you as an introduction tonight, a policy revision to our dress code. We'd like to unpack for you a little bit of that process, and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Cooper to communicate with you some of the details of the policy revision and administrative rule. And Dr. Little was correct in communicating to you that we began this process in December, really began sooner than that, and really want to give credit to our students, who came forward to their principals and other leaders in our system suggest that we could, should consider revising a policy that we haven't revised yet since 2004, and really want to celebrate our students' voice in beginning that process. We started with a small group of leaders within our system, teachers, principals, and assistant principals, to first take an investigation of our own policy while also looking at other district policies, the model policy that's provided by our School Boards Association, and policies even outside of our district. We then took that research and reflection to our stakeholder groups within our system. That include our Parents Advisory Council, our Teachers Advisory Council, and my favorite, our Students Advisory Council. And we gathered lots of feedback from them about both what they believed about our school's dress code policy that is supporting our middle and high school students, but also what type of recommendations they might have for us to consider as we would bring forth an introduction to you today. Mr. Cooper and I and other district leaders were able to participate in those focus groups, and I want to say thank you to the parents, the teachers, and the students, and the administrators, who provided such relevant feedback to assist us in providing revision for you to consider tonight in introduction. At the conclusion of those stakeholder groups, we took back this information. We collated it, and we began to look for themes that repeat, and we began to look for language that all parties believed was important to inform any revisions that we would take forward from there. And we presented those, and we've collected those as a draft, and we've, I know you've been provided that draft already, and Mr. Cooper's going to unpack that for you tonight.
Okay, you will see in your packet two documents, both the, both the policy, JICA, and the administrative rule. Not going to go through every, every word specifically in the red line version that we provided, but on the, on the policy, I do want to point out a few, a few things. The, the content and expectations for students does remain very much the same. We did want to articulate and put up front the things that are expected, as well as the major things that are not allowed. And you'll see that in the first, the first red line paragraph. The second part, the smaller, the smaller red paragraph does, does really highlight some things that our, our students particularly brought out as being important, and I do want to emphasize that with you. We did add a statement in there that the enforcement of the dress code would be handled with dignity, discretion, and respect toward students by all staff members throughout the district. That was a major thing that Student Advisory Council did share with us, as being important to them. Sometimes it's easier for us, I guess, as adults, to, to overlook and, and, and focus just on, on what we do, but maybe not necessarily how we do it. And with, with student dress and attire, when you are 13, 15, 17 years old, that, that is very important and very sensitive to, to students. So we want to make sure that that is, that is emphasized at the level that, that they felt was necessary. With the administrative rule, you'll see on that document that we did move more from a comprehensive list of do's and don'ts that was a part of that 2004 administrative rule, and we sought to really simplify and in, in create a, a narrative that did update language, as well as emphasize what is, is truly important about our dress code policy and the rules that we expect our students to follow. We wanted it also to be reflective of the times, when it puts in perspective that the fact that probably every student in this district wasn't born when the last policy was, was passed, that, you know, some things have changed in the last 18 years, even though I'm still wearing a sports coat and, and Azad khakis. Their, their fashion may have changed a little bit, and we want that to be reflective in, in what we, what we do, because students being, being comfortable as well as, as well as being engaged in their studies is, is very important. You'll see that the, the gist of that, that list of do's and don'ts is still reflected in our narrative. There are certain things that are expressly not allowed, and certain expectations that will, that we, that we do expect to be followed. We wanted to emphasize, too, that, you know, regardless of, of body type or size, you know, the same rules do apply. And you will see in that narrative that, you know, whether it's the length of the, the bottoms, where those bottoms must be worn, where the top must come down to, what must be covered, you know, both in the, both with the, the shirt and the pants, that, that does remain very much the same. One thing that you will see that is different in this is our allowance of headgear. All, all focus groups had a, had a major voice saying hats are not a problem. Now, we still have expectations and, and guidelines in our administrative rule as to what we would expect to be appropriate in the classroom, in terms of the face being visible and it not interfering with anyone else's view. But that is something that you will see different, but that did come from the feedback that we received from our groups. You'll also notice that, that the discretion of what is appropriate is, is ultimately made by the, the administrators at the school and the consequence guidelines that were in place, still do remain in place, with a small modification, and the really emphasis of the student being involved in the conference that is held, you know, with subsequent violations of the board policy. We're going to be taking this, after our meeting tonight, this will be taken back to our secondary principals group next week for their review, though they have already been very involved in giving feedback on this. We do want them to see this as, as the formal narrative, the formal narrative of both the policy and the administrative rule. So we'll be getting feedback from them at that time as well, and our plan is to bring this, or for Mr. Caldwell, to bring this to the board for first reading in, at the April board meeting. And Dr. Clamp and I will be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you all so much. I do have a few questions. So can we start with the headgear, the hats? You did say that that was kind of a, something that all of the focus groups addressed, that they- that they felt they weren't an issue. I'm just thinking through a few things. I, I can imagine a kid wearing a hoodie and choosing to wear a mask, and I start thinking about some, hesitate using the word safety, but they become then hard to identify. Is there any concern for that?
Well, one thing I will mention is that we do have language in here about the, the eyes and face must be fully distinguishable and visible. You know, so in terms of a hood, I think there's an appropriate way to wear a hood and one that would be inappropriate in a school setting as well. So, I mean, obviously, if there is a hood being worn, if there is a mask, there, there is going to be trouble perhaps recognizing that student outside of their, their ID and knowing them. However, it is, it is something that our, our students, staff, and parents did think was, was appropriate in, in this day.
Do any of y'all have an opinion on that?
Well, thank y'all. I'm kind of curious, who made up the focus groups?
The focus groups were those that are created within our system that we've had either appointments or elections towards those. For example, in our Teachers Advisory Council, those individuals roll in and roll off based on various positions they've had in our school system. Our Parents Advisory Council are informed decisions from schools and recommendations to our superintendent. And our Student Advisory Council is also informed decisions based on our building-level principals.
Okay, so do we know if all teachers have had an opportunity to give input for this?
So the way that the Teachers Advisory Council works is they have the ability to carry back forth into their classrooms and into their buildings, any conversations that we have, and we ask for feedback from them. So to suggest that all teachers have had an opportunity to voice, I don't know that we could measure that. What we do know is we expect our teachers that have been a part of that teacher leadership council to carry any information back towards their schools to get feedback, as well as beginning next week with our principals. Our principals on March 22nd will have a chance to take a look at this, just as we're doing tonight. And then their expectation will be, continue to gather voice and feedback and revision recommendations to us as we might bring you any new revised recommendations in the April board meeting.
Okay, one other question. Does AES have the same dress code as the rest of the district?
So this dress code policy would govern all secondary schools, so middle and high schools.
Okay, so I know they used to be really strict at AES. No hoods, no hats. So now that would be allowed at AES under this policy, is that correct?
Well, that's actually a good question. Mr. Caldwell, would you like to address the, any, any considerations that our alternative program may have in their dress code?
I've not had any direct conversation with anyone, but I suspect we would probably make it more stringent at that site, like we currently do. But again, I'm basing that on that being the first time I've been asked that question.
Okay.
Since it was more stringent now, I suspect we would maintain that.
Well, and, and that, that answer kind of goes back to a comment I was going to add to Ms. Henson's about the, I appreciate being receptive and open to, to these suggestions and that, you know, and, you know, hats or, you know, bandanas or whatever it might be. But knowing how teenagers are wired to maybe toe the line or push as far as they can into the gray area, anytime that there's just a phrase at the discretion of administration, I feel like a teenager's natural inclination is going to, to push that. Is there, are you concerned, I mean, is there a concern that maybe the gray area will be, make enforcement more difficult?
Our hope is that a reasonable gray area allows it to be enforced with, in my opinion, you know, a common sense. You know, it's, this dress code is one thing that it could be spent, you, you could do this all day, every day, and not do a thing else. And so our, our thought on this was to provide reasonable expectation and guidelines of do's and don'ts in terms of what's appropriate at, at the school and what's appropriate for, for being worn, and allow our administrators in place to, to apply that, use that lens to, to make decisions.
Well, and, and I, I mean, this has come up in a couple of other things, conversations I've had with Dr. Clamp recently. But, I mean, to me, the dress code, the purpose of the dress code is not to create opportunities for discipline. The purpose of the dress code is to make sure that the learning environment is conducive for optimal learning. And so I guess finding the right narrow path to that balance is always going to be a challenge. I mean, again, like Mr. Cooper said, you know, the way he and I might dress now, you know, our, you know, our children will wear that for a costume in high school because, you know, we're out of date or whatever. And so I'm just trying to make sure that we, we balance respecting and honoring and understanding dress norms for students in 2022, but also making sure that we're preserving the educational environment so that everyone is comfortable and everyone is respected. That's, I mean, that, I'm not sure that we're ever going to be able to put in writing something that, that strikes that perfect balance.
I mean, dress code's a sticky subject. It's, it's hard to put, oh, I'm trying to think of the exact word you used earlier, but it's hard to put that discretion in writing. You know, how do you list out this is appropriate and this is not? It's, it's, there's opinion there, but... I'm going to think on this between now and next month some more, but I do have a couple other questions to lead into. So can we talk about the consequences for a second? Let me just make sure I'm looking at them properly. I do like that the students are involved in the conferences and stuff. So is in-school suspension something that you heard from those focus groups that they felt was an appropriate consequence for a dress code violation?
Consequences actually was not in a, a narrative that came up that much. So the students actually were not looking for a reason not to wear something. They were actually voicing an opinion as to support and engagement in wearing something. So the consequences sometimes stand in a place to prevent students from acting. I know for me, in driving a vehicle, for example, if I'm afraid enough not to speed and, and know that my ticket that may be issued may increase my insurance, I may consider not speeding. So that consequence certainly is present. The students, the staff, even the parents, their narrative was more towards the language that was in our current policy and administrative rule. As a matter of fact, if you notice, the consequences were actually a place we actually revised the least because the feedback was actually not in that area. So they didn't have conflict in the consequences, or at least they didn't voice it in that manner. What we wanted to include that we believed we did hear was our students participating in the consequences and that narrative being a part of a dialogue that both the principals and the students could have together. So there actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cooper, there, there wasn't much if any feedback about altering any way the consequences.
So just food for thought, because we've heard so much about how there was classroom time lost and there's, our students are working to catch up over these last two years. I'm just thinking, and this is coming from Kathy, who was a classroom teacher. I just can't tell you how much I loathed the days when I looked at that list and I saw my students' names on in-school suspension because that meant they were in this building, but they were not in my math class. And so it was going to be more work for me to catch them up. It was going to be more work for them because they were behind. And so I just would be curious if we should consider something other than in-school suspension, definitely a consequence, because you're going to break a policy three times? Yeah, you need a consequence. Lunch detention after school detention, some type of community service, I guess, school service, I'm not sure. But, bored, y'all have any thoughts on in-school suspension for? I don't know.
That's actually great feedback that we can carry forward with our administrators on Tuesday next week.
I think where you're going is you want the punishment to not take them out of instruction.
Yes.
So again, let's lay that back on them. And again, because I think we're talking about instructional gaps that we have to close because of what we've all gone through. So I think that's great feedback.
I think ultimately, I mean, why do we have a dress code? Isn't it because we want to protect instruction? Something that interferes with instruction, distracts from instruction? I mean, that's, that's what we're, we're looking at the whole thing about. It's not about punishing kids, we're not running a penal colony, but we want, we want to protect instructional time. And I remember my days as a teacher, you'd have a couple of kids that were wearing something we called inappropriate. Well, the whole class was oogling and ogling, and there's no instruction going on. So I think that's the bottom line, is we want to protect instruction. Am I right?
And my last piece of feedback, let me, I wrote it down somewhere. Oh, so the proposal says the administration, and I think Emery actually touched on this a minute ago, the administration reserves the right to determine what is safe and appropriate for school dress. The, or the current policy states an individual school may have a more specific and restrictive dress codes if the school's administrators and the school improvement council recommend it and the superintendent and/or his or her designee approves it. So it sounds like this current proposal where it says the administration reserves the right to determine what's safe and appropriate is giving schools their own autonomy to make those decisions as opposed to district as a whole. Am I interpreting that incorrectly?
We did intentionally move that language about the schools in, in conversation with the school improvement councils, having a more stringent dress code, a more articulated stringent dress code, due to the fact of how much our students do intermingle across campuses now. I think that's one thing that's very different, particularly about a high school experience, is kids coming and going across campuses. And that was one thing that our students brought up, is that something might be more, more strict one place than, than another. And I, I know we kind of, it's, it's, it goes back to, I believe, what, what you already mentioned, that, that gray area, does it, does it cause problems or does it solve them? You know, and we're hoping that it does solve them, but, but we did remove that because of, that was brought up as it being, you know, at one particular place, you know, something's allowed and, and another one, something isn't.
Right, so, Mr. Cooper, then I would be remiss tonight if I did not bring up the subject and the fact that we currently do have a school in our district that is not following policy the way the rest of our schools are implementing it. And so looking towards the future, I mean, we have a school in our district that has a policy about shorts are fine as long as they don't show the buttocks and that head coverings are allowed and visible straps on undergarments, worn under clothing over the shoulder is currently allowed. I mean, I feel like we're doing all this work tonight, but if those things are not going to be allowed, I mean, are going to be allowed in other schools, bored, accountability for our schools, our district, thoughts?
Well, I mean, you bring up something that I've noticed, not only with the dress code, but in other places as well. Understand giving, you know, administrators autonomy. But for instance, at one school, tardies, if you have more than nine tardies, it's OSS. And more than that, you could be recommended for expulsion. But according to board policy, it says you, you just won't be considered for some kind of award if you have nine tardies. So I think there's a bigger picture here that we have to get to the bottom of before we can fix this one part. And I don't, I don't know how to do that, but that's, that's what I see a lot is what's in the handbook and what's in the policy may not necessarily be what's taking place in the schools.
I think there, there are some things that we just need to make one Chick-fil-A chicken sandwich. You know, I've kind of used that analogy before that, you know, across the district, there are, there are some things that have to be standardized. And at the same time, we have to balance it with the idea in mind. And I think this goes to the discretion part, that at our schools are very professional people and, and should... So, so that's how I counterbalance the discretion part, is that ultimately, we're entrusting this to someone we have hired as a very professional person. And so I, I think comes with that, the ability to, to make some of these decisions within the guidelines that are provided, within the structure of the chicken sandwich, for lack of a better term. I, I think to your point, Ms. Henson, you know, I, I think one of, one of the things that, that we attempted to do through COVID was we tried to acknowledge the powers that be. We didn't try to go rogue, we didn't try to go paint outside of the lines. We tried to acknowledge the framework in which we worked in. We may not agreed with it, we may have made our challenges where we could, but ultimately, we did not go rogue in that, in, in our decision-making process, which I hope is some form of an embodiment of behavior. And so, you know, I, I can certainly appreciate the times have changed and things have changed. Do I have a problem with a ball cap? No, not really. Do I have a problem with it looking like the Kentucky Derby? Yeah, probably. You know, I could see where that would be a little bit of distraction to, to the learning environment. So I think the proper way is to bring forth things like this and basically ask for permission rather than forgiveness. You know, our, one of our charges, one of our most important charges is to make policy and set policy and to receive feedback and to digest that feedback and to try to look at all sides and get all input. And so, yeah, I, I will admit, it's concerning if, if you have, if you have situations in which policy has not been followed within that spirit. I think there's a way to do it and there's a way not to do it. So as far as how to fix it, I don't know. I would leave that up to the board itself.
Well, I, I know, when my children were younger, I remember having a conversation, it may have been in like a Sunday school class or something, talking about parenting children and how if you tell them, okay, don't step on that crack, they're going to step on all the other cracks, but not that crack. And that sometimes it's easier to tell them what they can do. And I think that's kind of what, our policy is the framework in which our schools can operate and our dress code can operate. And so I think what we're looking at here is building a dress code that is, this is the dome of dress code policies. And as long as the discretion within the schools falls within those guidelines, then that discretion is perfectly acceptable and okay. It's when that discretion has taken outside of the policy, and I think that's, is your point, is that some discretion has been exercised that takes the, the practice of our policy outside of what the policy actually says. And maybe, maybe this is the opportunity to bring that, to bring that back in and hone that back. Because one of the things that get, I mean, to me, is, to Ms. Garris's point, that is always an extreme challenge is when things are, rules are implemented inconsistently between our schools. And so, you know, and I think tardies is probably a good thing to talk about another time. I don't think that falls in with, within this, but I think that that is, because I, I've, I've noticed that as well. I mean, my son had after-school detention today for being tardy. And he deserved it because he had been late to school. But there, that punishment has not met it out the same at other high schools. And so that's another con, you know, another conversation. But I do think that, that y'all have done a lot of big lift. I know you've had a bazillion meetings about this. And so, you know, I'm excited to get a policy that, you know, and I think that the dress code policy we had was so out of date that it probably was difficult to implement because it, it really was, didn't meet the needs of the students that we have now. Not that a dress code meets needs, but, you know, that it, it did seem a little bit anachronistic to how students, you know, conduct themselves now. So I'm excited to maybe get something on the books that we can, that can give our schools a little bit more flexibility and a little bit more freedom, but also really set some, some stronger guidelines. So, and dress code is hard.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I thought...
No, no, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that.
That's fine, if you want to. Now, Mr. Salters, I believe that you're going to talk to us about state procurement code.
Yes, probably not as riveting a topic as dress code, but equally as important. So tonight, we have overloaded your board packet with a couple of very lengthy documents. But I want to try to talk through this with you briefly, and we'll have some more conversations about that in the next month as well. So the state procurement code follows, or is required in, in school districts when they exceed a $75 million annual budget limit.
We are required to follow substantially similar, um, code to the state. That happened in this district many, many years ago when our annual budget exceeded $75 million. In fact, I think shortly after that, Tracy Lucas, who's in the back here, our director of procurement, came on board, um, kind of shepherded the district into that first realm of, um, having, operating under a, a procurement code, um, that was similar to the state. So, um, why are we here tonight talking about it? The general assembly over the last few years made some substantial, substantial changes to the state procurement code, uh, really to bring the code in line with, uh, today's, uh, market conditions and, and what we are experiencing, um, as we, uh, try to operate under the code. The Division of Procurement Services, um, you know, by regulation is required to issue an opinion about the school model code, which is developed to make, uh, it's a state that it's substantially similar to the state code. And so, um, that has occurred, and then the Division of Procurement Services has published the model code, of which you have a copy. And, um, you know, they have stated that it does substantially mirror the state code by law. So, uh, just a quick look back at the history of the code in Lexington 1. We adopted this code in 1998. Well, we fall, fell under state procurement code in 1998. We've had several updates since then. The last code update was 2008, and so that's currently the code, uh, version that we're operating under at this time. The model district code, um, as I mentioned, was published in, um, September of '21. You can see here, um, the, the theme of the model code is consistency. Division of Procurement Services really, um, worked hard to get this code, um, to fit the needs of school districts. And, um, and I would say districts large and small. And of course, not really small because they wouldn't have an annual budget of $75 million, but, um, but across the spectrum there. But really focusing on providing consistency for all, all districts across the state. That does a number of things. You know, many districts in the state use similar, uh, audit firms. And so, um, it gives the auditors a consistent look, uh, when they're doing procurement audits, uh, for code compliance, uh, which obviously we go through as well. And then it, it also kind of brings to, uh, a consistent format the, the contracts, legal remedies and so forth, terms and conditions, um, that districts fall under, that are associated with, um, different contracts and purchases that, that are made, um, through the course of our operation. So the, the documents that we have, um, given you, um, are the 2021 model district code and the regulations associated with that. And, and I give Tracy a big shout out. She put together a, kind of a summary of changes document that you have. You know, unless you really want to, um, you know, need something to fall asleep with one night, I would recommend you focus on the summary of changes document. Does a really good job of summarizing, um, the differences in the code. You know, I would say primarily what the changes focus on are threshold limits. You know, taking certain, um, limits from, say, zero to 2,500 to zero to 10,000. You know, from 2,500 to 10,000, 10,000, 25,000, some, things like that. And again, these are not, um, you know, Lexington 1, um, suggestions or decisions. These are coming from the state model code. So, but the summary document really does a good job of, uh, identifying those, um, those changes in, um, in the state code. We also, for your reference, uh, provided the current code. It is linked on our website and available to the public for viewing on the website. And so, you know, but we wanted you to have that reference point as you, as you look through this. The note is really important. The district must adopt all of the code or none of the code. You can't adopt partial sections of the code. So you can't, um, look at the new code and say, wow, I really like, um, you know, the limit from going from zero to 2,500, let me, uh, to, to zero to 10,000, let me adopt that. But I don't want to adopt the part, um, you know, in a later section, you know, that talks about some other change. You, you, you have to, you have to adopt the, the model code. We have, I say, Tracy has done an excellent job highlighting the few areas within the new code where you have a local choice. A couple of examples of that, um, one would be, uh, where you advertise your solicitations. And so, we use the South Carolina Business Opportunities, um, um, process, and that's a, you know, there's a website and it's very commonly used across the state. And vendors are familiar with it, the district, um, districts across the state use it, and it has, uh, given us good results in competition over the years. Each of the areas that we have highlighted, um, we have kept the same. Our recommendation is to keep them the same in the, um, code that we would adopt, um, going forward. Another example would be like, um, the appellate panel for, um, you know, procurement protests. The, the final panel in the, in the code lists the school board. And we've kept that the same because we feel that's important. Ultimately, it would, you know, any kind of protest would ultimately stop at the school board. So, um, you can see those highlighted things in the new code. And again, we've kept those choices the same from our current, um, code. And so, those are really the, the few things that, um, you know, the district has the ability to, to weigh in on. And so, as you look at this over the next, um, month, if you have questions about any of that, I would, I would encourage you to, um, you know, share those with us. And so, just kind of a timeline of what we're, we're trying to track towards here with the adoption of, of the code. Obviously, we're here in March presenting the, the code for your review. The board in April, we would look for you to, um, adopt the code, um, as, as it's presented, unless you have some recommended change in, to one of those highlighted areas. And then, uh, we would begin working simultaneously on the internal operating procedures that would need to be updated, uh, to, um, you know, mirror the, the new code limits and so forth. And then we have to, once that, uh, process is done, we have to submit the code to, uh, the state for review and approval. We're not exactly sure how long that timeframe will take. Obviously, it depends on what's going on at the state level and how much, uh, workload they have to deal with. But we would, we'd certainly hope to get that to them, uh, in May so that we could, um, really work towards a July implementation, uh, of the new code. From a auditing standpoint, um, it, it would be better to be under the new code starting July 1, when our fiscal year starts, uh, such that we can, um, because we are doing annual procurement audits. They could do an audit based on the new code, and it would, it would just be cleaner, um, to start the new year. You know, under that, um, that code requirement. So, um, we've also, you know, modeled, we have, there's, uh, several districts in the state, who are kind of in this process, and so, some have actually just recently adopted, uh, the new code. And so, we, we modeled this timeline also after, after those implementations as well. So, um, that's really what we're tracking towards, um, over the next, uh, few months. And, you know, with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have this evening regarding, uh, this information.
So I just have a couple of questions. The CBO, is that the chief finance officer? Is, and here it's referred to as.
The CBO is chief.
Yes. Okay, and CPO, are there more than one? And if so, what would their titles be?
Chief procurement officer is, there's one.
Well, chief procurement officer, okay. So would that be the only one?
Yeah, there's, there's one chief procurement officer. And that's typically, um, in school districts, the CFO, who, person acting as CFO.
Okay, I just know in the code, it says multiple CPOs may be identified. I didn't know if we were identifying more or we're just sticking with the.
We have the one.
Okay. And then PO is the person that solicits the, um, that does the solicitations. Who would that be in our district? What would their title?
Tracy, um, would be one of those. Or she, well, I guess she would be the, the primary one, yeah. It's procurement officer, yeah.
Okay.
Director of procurement is what we call.
Okay. I just know those allow for multiple, so I didn't know who all we had in the district. So I know in the model code, when it comes to the creation of the review panel, the code was, what we were given for Lexington 1, um, it was modified to allow the board to serve as the district procurement review panel. The model code recommends that members of the community who represent the professions and businesses affected by this code serve on the panel. It says four persons shall be appointed. They should be members of the community who are well-respected, um, of several professions, including not limited to information technology, procurement, construction, and so on. So what was the reason for not using the model language and instead going with the alternate language?
I would have to go back. Well, first of all, this is, we, we, we mirrored the language that was adopted in 2008. Sorry, in 1998, which has carried forward since the original adoption. And that gave the, the board the authority to be the review panel. I, I can't necessarily speak for, um, the board at the time. I can tell you that, that, you know, our feeling about maintaining that continuity is that the board, um, you know, makes these types of appeal decisions on other, um, aspects of the school district operation and has a very good understanding of the district and the, you know, goings-on of the district. And would want to maintain that control, um, of that appeal. Certainly, that can be, I mean, that's up for discussion, obviously, but, um, that's, that's been the opinion, um, in, in years past.
Okay. Just to the board, I would say, it goes on in the model procurement code to say, in order to minimize the workload on school board members and to avoid any appearances of impropriety, we recommend that there be a panel of community members. And as far as I can see, this is the only section of the code where the district used alternate language instead of the model language. So, but in our case, I think the appearance of impropriety is especially applicable to our board because we have board members serving on committees that evaluate and make recommendations to the board for construction and architecture form, firms. So as part of the procurement review panel, those same board members would be tasked with reviewing and making determinations when there exist concerns regarding the procurement of construction.
If they were involved in a committee like that, they would have to recuse themselves from that committee. That was, that's standard. You would not make a decision based on something you were actively involved in.
Right, so we already, we would have, then any board members would have to come off of that construction or architectural review.
No, you wouldn't have to come off those committees if there was an appeal. If there, if one of those vendors appeal or protest the award, then the board member would not be able to set, sit on the appellate panel to hear the appeal. They would recuse themselves.
Right, so that's my thing. And, and I just think, I mean, I've always wanted committees with community members on them, and this seems like the perfect opportunity. In addition, our board has no experience in functioning in a quasi-judicial capacity, although, you know, we're allowed to do that. We just don't have any experience in that. And the only remedy to the district panel's reviews decision is the court of appeals. So if we, you know, make a judgment call that might not be so good, um, then we're going to end up in court. Also.
Which would be the same if you had a community panel.
Right, but the community members would actually be, um, these four persons would be members of the community who serve in those professions. So I don't know about any of y'all, but I don't have any experience in, you know, architecture, engineering, construction management, land surveying.
Mr. Salters, have we had any, uh, procurement, procurement review appeals?
To the board?
Yes.
No, ma'am.
I mean, when.
Tracy, you don't recall it, no. This was just created. I mean, this is in this new model code.
Mr. Salters said that this process has been.
Yeah, the, the board has been the procurement review panel.
For, since, he says since 1998, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, the, the model code says that there is created the district procurement review panel, which is charged with the responsibility to review and determine these things.
So who reviewed it prior to the new model policy?
The board has been, yes.
Have we ever had any reviews come before?
That's what she just asked, and no, we have not.
There's not been any in 24 years?
Since 1998.
So if there were something that needed to be reviewed, you're just saying that would have, by default, gone to the board?
It's part of the code, part of the 08 code. It establishes the, the board. I'll find the page number if you need me to.
Okay, I just think it's a lot of responsibility for the board, and we don't have any experience, because they're also then tasked with issuing subpoenas.
I guess there is no precedent for that because that's never happened.
Right. And my concern is, I just, if, if the model code is suggesting that a panel be composed of members of the community who have experience in these professions, and we don't have that experience, I don't know why we wouldn't err on the side of caution and turn this over to someone who does have experience with these things.
You certainly can do that as, with, with your, within the board. That's certainly your option. That is an option within the code. We simply recommended you follow what you, how the structure has already been followed. So that's been the way it's been in the district since we implemented a procurement code and we recommended continuing that. But you certainly, as a board, can make that option and just let us know if that's what you want to change. And at that point, you're going to need to be specific about the appointment of community members, the process for doing that, what qualifications they have, what, if any authority you might would have, um, at, at some point after that. But you start getting too far out of, um, the, you know, this jurisdiction, if you will, of the, of the code, then, um, you're going to subject us to potentially not getting an approval process done by the state. They may not approve that. If you start writing a bunch of stuff in there is what I'm getting at.
No, it's already written in there.
I'm saying as far as guidance on, like, you might say, we want these four people, but we want authority over these four people, so on and so forth. So I'm just saying.
No, it tells you how to do everything. It tells you who, how the panel must be composed, um, who must appoint them, um.
I'm just saying if you don't follow those rules, then you might subject yourself to some issues.
Do those rules need to be established with the adoption of this code? Or can the language stay in there so that it's?
We, we, we need to, we need to establish all of that as part of the adoption of the code. So the board can decide what you want to do, that's perfectly fine. You just need to let us know what you want to do so that we can include it in what you vote on.
So we can do what we've always done, or we can establish a completely new process.
That's right.
But you've never done it before. Yeah.
It's been structured that way, is I think what you're referring to. We've always had it structured that the board was the final review panel. Because in years past, the boards have wanted that capability.
But, but this is, this is in effect our first reading of this because we need to vote on it in April, correct?
We need a vote in April.
Okay, so that, so, so this is the first reading of this?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Garris, would you mind, um, sending your suggestions or?
It's written, it's in section 4410. I was just reading from the actual model code. It's all written in there.
It's page 49.
Okay, yeah, I don't have the, the full thing. I just brought a couple of notes.
Okay, so it's in the model, but not what the administration recommended?
Correct.
Okay, well, I guess then we'll just, um, since we're not voting tonight, we'll just, um, maybe have some offline conversation with Mr. Salters and, um, we'll await what the administration recommends in April.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions about the procurement code? Ms. Garris, without all your questions?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Salters, staying with you, we are going to talk budget priorities.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you. Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, give us a second to get the presentation loaded here. We have a, a little bit more of a discussion this evening. Um I hate that it's nine forty-five, but just bear with me because it's really only eight forty-five, right? Just keep that in mind.
Not at five thirty tomorrow morning.
Well, yeah, yes, sir, you, it does catch up to you. So you recall this time last year, we came together, we talked about some uh priorities for the, the, the budget um for the current year. I just want to remind you of those priorities briefly. Uh we focused on maintaining and reducing student teacher ratios, step increase for staff, identify and implement employee retention recruitment strategies. We were able to accomplish um each of these priorities. We also had some others planning for the relocation of the LMS facility, obviously. That's underway, uh preparing for the opening of a Gilbert Early Childhood Center. A, a lot of work was done on um that program development uh with, with um our Educational Services Division. Um and, and that is ongoing. We did provide support for Lula. Uh it was very successful this year, um expanding the college center at Gilbert High School. And then obviously, we continued to deal with um, with COVID nineteen impacts. I want to talk for a few minutes before we get into priorities for this year about the stuff you're seeing in the news related to the state um and the governor's uh budget proposal. So uh the House, um House Bill fifty-one fifty uh was moved uh out of ways and means the full house. They actually, I think, gave a second reading today with, or yes, yesterday, uh with no alternates added. And um they will have, have that moved over to the Senate, um I would anticipate by the end of the week. It includes some education funding reform, um which is aid to classroom funding. And it, it, this is very um tricky language that's been kind of mixed up some in the press, but it, it called for a four thousand dollar per cell increase to the state minimum salary schedule. And so not to just give four thousand dollars based on where you are, it's four thousand dollars per cell to the state minimum salary schedule. Teacher supply checks, uh good news there, are going from two hundred and seventy-five dollars to three hundred dollars. Those are issued uh at the beginning of each school year um to our teachers and they're used to, to help uh fund supply needs in the classroom. Uh some other um highlights, if you will, of the um House fifty-one fifty. There's an employer, um portion of health insurance is increasing um by eighteen point oh one percent. Really glad that we got that oh one percent in there. Uh it's currently point eight. That's the, the number. It's going from point eight to um eighteen point one um percent increase. So we will receive some funding for this um from the state, but it hasn't been determined how much yet.
So it's increasing from eight something to eighteen point one?
Deborah, it's point eight, isn't that right? Did Deborah leave? Yeah, it's point eight, yeah.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, and so the, uh, the employer portion of retirement increases um also by one percent. So just as information, we, we um contribute twenty-three point eight one percent to the retirement system for each employee. So I just want you to just think about that for a second. When you think about the cost of um, you know, education.
How much is that for the aggregate for the district?
I'll have to get you that number. It's a lot. I can get it to you by like a payroll or something if you, okay. But uh that's, that's a significant, I mean, you know, most employers contribute, you know, three percent, six percent match maybe in a 401K, something like that, if, if you're lucky. And so we're at twenty-three point eight one, so that's a pretty, pretty big number. Uh it is a nice retirement plan. State also is requiring a five percent increase per cell um to the state minimum bus driver salary schedule, as well as a three percent increase to bus drivers, uh because they're considering them part of the state employee, three percent. So bus drivers um can see, um it's an overall eight percent increase, but it's, it's to the state um schedule. So uh the example that uh I think I used over the weekend was, you know, if we're paying um a bus driver twenty-four dollars an hour already, and the state sales go up by, you know, the state sale is twenty dollars. That eight percent increase is a dollar sixty. So we have to give a dollar sixty to our twenty-four dollar um number, not eight percent of twenty-four dollars, okay? So it's a little bit less than eight percent on what our steps are because we're already paying above. But you have to give what the minimum um would, or what the eight percent would be on the, on the state minimum schedule. So um it's, it's a little confusing because we're already paying above um the state minimums on, on these schedules. But that's the requirement. Governor McMaster, you've heard, you know, he proposed a new funding formula, aid to classroom um program. Base student cost um is no longer the driving force in the funding formula. And, and so the, the formula, the theory is, is meant to simplify um and give flexibility to districts on funding. And so the, the funding is, is uh meant to replace some of the restricted funding, um you know, you see listed there. The basis for the formula is to fund classrooms based on a cost of a teacher, the statewide average uh student teacher ratio, and a state share of total funding. I need, I need you to understand that, that this number is eleven point two to one, okay? But we, we've been told that that is not a classroom student teacher ratio, even though it is called a student teacher ratio. You would think that if it's called a student teacher ratio, that would be what it is, but it's not. It, you, you're not expected to have eleven point two students in a classroom with one teacher. That's not, um, that's not the expectation. And so, but that's how the formula, that's the multiplier in the formula. The state funds are distributed based on uh weighted pupil units. And so what that means is every student gets a weighting. And for example, a special education student has a higher weighting than a regular education student. The theory is there are more needs for that student, um and it costs more to um educate that child, so they, they should get a more proportion, a higher proportion of the funding. This formula established new weightings, did away with a few weightings and established um some new weights for some other things. It also looks at the index of taxpaying ability um of the district. And all districts in the state have an index of taxpaying ability that is published um by Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. And um that is a, a multiplier that she used. And so that's theoretically the ability of your district to pay a portion of this um funding.
Mr. Salters, I, I was able to find the index of taxpaying ability. I could not find the weighted pupil units. Do, do we have that number for the district?
Yes.
Is that?
So we are three point two eight percent of the state weighted pupil units.
We're three one eight two percent.
And I will tell you, we have, um, I went too far.
And the, um, the presentation that uh Revenue and Fiscal Affairs did for SESBA last week, in that there's a chart that shows what our weighted pupil units is now and what it will be under this new.
There's a chart of that.
We have thirty-nine thousand uh three hundred and ninety-six point one six weighted pupil units in the formula. Thirty-nine, three nine six point one six.
And that's under the new formula or the old?
Yes, sir.
New formula.
The new formula. Under the uh, our forty-fifth day, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, this, this past uh forty-fifth day, we had thirty-six thousand six hundred and forty-one point nine nine weighted pupil units. So we, we were three point five six percent of the state at that point. We're now three point two eight percent of the state, even though ours went up.
Yep.
Everybody's went up.
Yeah, that was the three slides I'd, I just glossed right over.
Yeah.
In that presentation, yeah.
Thank you for that question. So the, the idea, uh again, by the legislature is that districts, and the governor really, is that districts have more flexibility in spending the allocation. You know, the, the funding is not required to all be spent on salaries. I, I'll just be honest with you, that's, it's, it's almost um uh comical that, that that's in there because there's no way you cannot spend all of your allocation and meet the salary schedule, and you'll see that in a minute. So it's nice to have the flexibility, but it's gonna have to all go to um funding the salary um schedule. I've listed the positions here that uh the formula um addresses, and so this is what the funding is given for. And so when you see some numbers later, um those numbers are associated with giving raises to these individuals in our school system. It does not address, the numbers do not address anyone else outside of this. So, you know, um basically, all of our support staff, any other administrators, um don't fall into these, these categories with this funding. Under the current formula, the district is one of five school districts in the state, five, that get a decrease in funding. The current estimate is about four point four million dollars. And this is a, they're calling this a hold harmless funding. And so they're going, they're going to give us that four point four million dollars this year as part of the budget provisions, um as a hold harmless payment. Many of you haven't, haven't been on the board long enough to see the effects of Act three eighty-eight. We used to do in our, in our budget presentations, um a, a slide that talked about the impact of Act three eighty-eight, which also had a hold harmless provision. We quit calculating the lost revenue at, I think, around two hundred and forty million dollars to this district over the years since two thousand seven, when Act three eighty-eight has been in place. So the idea of a hold harmless um for, i- is, is not where this district is interested in seeing um this legislation go. We need, we need the, the funding short, you know, without the hold harmless. Because that hold harmless, just like the budget, is a year-to-year um deal. And it could be included in a year, it could be increased in a year, it could be not included in a year, depending on what the, the funding is, is available at state level. Right now, there's a pretty good surplus. So taking a look at the um uh estimated impact uh to the district on this um proviso, the base formula that, that uh we're looking at is one hundred and thirty-one million, the hold harmless payment of four point four million. We'll end up seeing um the one hundred and thirty-six million, which basically is the revenue where we are now. Uh what we got this year is what they're anticipating. And then we will see um a nine hundred and seven thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollar additional payment out of this. So our total aid will be that one thirty-seven, one thirty-seven million and some change. Okay, so here's where the math uh comes in. And I, I really appreciate um Deborah, uh Seymour, and, and Lindsay Price have worked diligently with us, trying to figure out different scenarios and things to look at. And so I really appreciate all the support uh that they've given through this because I've beat them up with questions over the last few days. So one simple math concept that you could theoretically do is, teachers have heard they're getting a four thousand dollar raise, okay? So I wanted you to know what that looked like in our district, okay? So um, and when I say teachers, I apologize, I'm using the list of individuals that, that are on that, that previous slide. So it's, it's all the other uh individuals listed as well. So to give that group of employees, that subgroup, a four thousand dollar raise on our salary schedule, just take what we have now and give them four thousand dollars, is eleven point one million dollars. Yes, ma'am. Remember, that's the additional revenue we're getting, okay? Just keep that in the back of your mind. So the cost for Lexington School District One to increase our salary schedule essentially to meet the state minimum, so what's gonna happen is the state minimum is gonna go up by four thousand dollars a sell. Okay, on average, Lexington One pays thirteen point seven nine percent higher per sell than the state salary schedule, okay? So if you can take step twelve with a master's degree, which is what they're looking at in the, in the formula, and on average, we pay thirteen point seven nine percent higher than the state, all right? That's really important, and I know Ms., Ms. Price is not here. But, but she would argue with you that we have to maintain that to be able to bring teachers into our school system. The salary schedule is getting very competitive among school districts. And teachers can, you know, go district to district, and, and, and we have to remain competitive. So one of the reasons we're at this thirteen point seven nine as well, and I'll point out, is our salary schedule goes to forty years of experience, okay? The state's schedule stops at twenty-three years of experience. So that's what, that's how they're funding it. So basically, anything over twenty-three that we want to give teachers in these other support positions, i- it's coming out of our, our pocket, okay? So what we did is we said, all right, what is the cost difference if we took the four thousand dollars per sell on the state minimum and looked at our current salary schedule, what's the difference that that would cost us? Where we are under the statement, the new state minimum, the four thousand dollars, would be in our early steps on a couple of our schedules, and then maybe one or two random steps along the way. But basically, after the first few years, we would still exceed the state minimum plus the four thousand dollars going forward, okay? So we're still better off, if you will. So there are a few places where we're not, and so we would have to give that group of employees a raise to get us to the state minimum. Everywhere else, we're already at the state minimum. It might, does that make sense? Okay, so that cost is six hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. You can't do that, um, well, well, there's a provision that wants uh to force districts to maintain their local percentage. So if I'm contributing thirteen point seven nine percent now, they want me to maintain that thirteen point seven nine percent on top of whatever the state minimum is. So if the state, you know, if, if its salary was fifty thousand, it goes up to fifty-four, I've got to apply that thirteen point seven nine to that, much like the bus driver example, and add that to whatever my salary is, so that I maintain that percentage difference.
So it's a, it's a, like a supplement, not supplant, sort of?
Exactly. And so if we have to maintain the local support, then you get back into the eleven point five million dollar range, okay? And so the, these are, it's very important conversation because, again, that is our new revenue. Now, I will be the first to tell you, my mom was a teacher. I, I've worked in this district for, you know, twenty-seven years. Teachers need and deserve the raise, and I'll be the first to tell you that. There's no doubt, okay? We've got to figure out a way to make this funding adjustment to this formula work so that we can afford to give it to them. Because guess what? We haven't talked about any other staff positions. We haven't talked about a housekeeper. We haven't talked about a custodian. You know, we did talk about bus drivers, and that, there is some funding coming for that, but it won't be fully funded. So we have a number of other support positions we still have to address. So the other thing that we, that, that we have to do is we have to give them a step. So not only do theoretically we have to pay this eleven point five million dollars, we also have to give a step increase. For, for that subgroup of employees, a step increase is two point five million dollars. Might as well say two point six. So the highest potential cost for that subgroup would be maintaining the local percentage and giving a step, which would be around fourteen point one million dollars for us annually. If you net out the additional funding that's received, it ends up being about thirteen point two million this year, because we got held harmless. But remember, next year, that's a year-to-year deal. So we could be looking at next year, that, plus whatever raise we have to give, plus the hold harmless provision of four point four million dollar difference. So.
Again, we're one of five districts in the state that the new funding model penalized. And it's based because it's based, it's based upon our local tax basis.
Index taxpayability and our weighted pupil units. Yes, sir.
So Lexington One has more taxpaying entities.
You have two of the York districts, you have Buford, and you have Lexington, Bristol Five. Okay, and us.
But can I, can I need to interject one thing? If you talk to the districts who are quote-unquote winners.
Yeah, they're they're losers too.
They're actually explaining that they're losers. Some of them, even with the additional funding, will not be able to afford this no matter what they do. So, it's a, while we're talking about it in terms of the these five districts, the superintendents that I've discussed, or that I've talked to about this across the state, even those that you look on the paper and go, gosh, they're they're doing okay on this thing, when they do the math, they're also not doing okay.
They're getting millions of dollars in allocation to them increase, but still can't afford to cover the cost of the four thousand dollar raise. And some districts we've talked with don't have the millage levy available to cover the required revenue needed to make the change. So, you're you're really in a mess at that point.
So the bigger agenda, again, coming out of the State House is increase teacher pay, but shift the cost of district expenses more to local.
So, i- if you recall, the the EFA was originally seventy thirty. Okay, so the first thing you're going to hear is, well, now it's seventy-five twenty-five. That's what they're doing with this funding. They're shifting the formula to be seventy-five twenty-five. That's but one multiplier. Okay, and so you you adjust weighted pupil units, the weighted pupil units across the state goes up, you look at the, you incorporate index taxpayability, you change, the the key factor is, you change the the salary of the teacher, and you increase it by four thousand dollars. And we haven't put a number on the eighteen percent, well, the eighteen percent for us, for the for the health insurance is four point seven five million dollars. We don't know how much of that we're gonna get. So I I haven't even talked really about covering that, because we don't know what that revenue looks like. But you will, if you talk to your House member or Senator today, you'll hear, well, we shifted it from seventy thirty to seventy-five twenty-five, that's gotta be good, right? Well, it sounds good until you start doing the math with the rest of the multipliers involved in the equation. So let me, let me just keep going a little bit here. And here's, here's some recommendations that that, you know, we've looked at. You you need to do something to change the split. You need to go to eighty twenty, you know, ninety ten, something like that. You can't just, you know, because there's a surplus, you can't just take three hundred, four hundred million dollars and say, let's just put that in the in the system. You have to change one of the multipliers in the equation, because you you started here at the cost of a teacher, and you went forward, and you got the overall in-game cost, which is four billion dollars or whatever. So you can't just say, I'm gonna now do four point four billion dollars, because you gotta work backwards. I mean, at some point, you're not gonna change the cost of a teacher, you have to change some other multiplier, because we've established the cost of a teacher. So you you increase the split, and that introduces more revenue into the into the formula. You can up it even more than that. I mean, ninety ten would be great. Eighty-five fifteen would be great, but you have to do something to get more money into this formula. We also feel strongly that you can, you do not need to require the local match percentage. That doesn't mean that the district won't give a salary increase to teachers, but it it gives the district the flexibility to determine within its budget, and I'm not just speaking for Lexington School District One, I'm speaking for the districts in the state. It gives that district the ability to determine within their budget and their community what they feel necessary to support. So, this district, over the last three years, has not raised millage. We've been very aware of the impact of millage on our business community, because Act three eighty-eight puts the burden on the business community, essentially. Businesses have struggled with COVID and and all the other, you know, losses that we've dealt with. And so we've been very aware of that, and have not raised millage intentionally. And we figured it out. And other districts have done the same thing. Some districts in the state have raised the maximum millage every year and still can't cover this. So, but you need, you need to not require that local match, because again, if you require that local match, it's eleven point five million dollars out of the gate that we have to figure out a way to fund. And remember, we're getting nine hundred and seven thousand dollars in revenue. So, I'm I'm gonna back up for just a minute, and then I'm gonna talk about millage. So in in this this fiscal year, just talking a little bit about the the budget that we are in right now, I want to just remind you of a couple of things. In this year's budget, we we budgeted using seven and a half million dollars of fund balance. You know, the board approved one-time payments to employees. Remember, that was about ten point six million dollars. That's a good number to have in your mind. That's essentially two thousand dollars to our employees, which is, you know, I just used the number four thousand employees, we're, you know, right around that number. So, you you can see the cost of that two million dollars. So, when the, when they start talking about, you know, four thousand dollars a a teacher, well, if you tried to do that four thousand dollars across the system, you basically are gonna double that number, and that's what your cost is gonna end up being, okay? So you can just remember that as we go forward. So, how did we pay for that? You recall, we had a surplus of twenty twenty twenty-one, twelve point five million. So we funded the one-time payments out of that, and that left about a two million dollar unexpended surplus. The amended budget for the district, you know, this this kind of shows that, three hundred and thirteen million. And you can see where these payments came out of our our fund balance. This was the original budget, and then we added that ten point six, and that's that's where we ended up. So, but you can see, we ended up, you know, in this three hundred and thirteen million dollar budget budget frame after the amended budget. We always show this slide, because I I think it's really important that people understand that this operation is is about people. The most valuable resource we have is people, and it's classroom teachers, it's support staff in our schools. And those people make up eighty-eight point three percent of our of that three hundred and thirteen million dollars. We have to pay utilities and maintain our facilities. We we provide programs and services to to support our instructional programs and other things going on in our schools. But the but the overall focus is on our people, where it should be. Flipping back now, talking about millage for a few minutes, you know, the the law allows us to do a look back for the three preceding years. We last used a look back in two thousand and fifteen sixteen, and at that time, we used eight point two four mils of an available seventeen point eight two mils. You can see on this chart that since two thousand and nineteen, we have not done any millage increase. And that's a testament to the board's commitment to the community and sound budgeting practices and the ability for the district to fund some pretty good initiatives and make some changes to the way we did budgeting to create some opportunities to support the the programs that we have going forward, without a millage increase. We didn't use any look back as well. So, with that being said, we we have some millage that we could use for look back. We're anticipating this year that we could see around a twenty point six mil limit. This is formula-driven, and it's basically CPI plus population growth, and 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 you get a, you get a formula number there. I guess, one thing about inflation is that that number gets higher. I guess if if there is a positive of the inflation we're seeing, is that you potentially could generate more millage as a function of the formula. So we're anticipating that to be around twenty point six nine, that's just an estimate. We definitely have these thirty-nine point oh six mils of look back available to us. And so, if you added those two together, you know, roughly, you end up with a fifty-nine point seven five mil levy. Again, that's an estimate based on this year's number. You see what that amount of millage levy would generate? Nineteen million dollars. Okay, so, and we just put some random, I appreciate Deborah showing this, just in, you know, so you have some jumping off points, so you know, hey, if I wanna raise twenty mils, it's this. If I wanna raise twenty-five, it's this. So this is helpful for perspective. So, i- if you want to raise ten ten mils, we can generate, you know, three point one million dollars of revenue. Or remember, if we have to maintain that local match, we're starting out of the gate with about a fourteen million dollar number. So, you're gonna spend fourteen million dollars, so you're gonna be down in in this neck of the woods. And you haven't given anyone else in the in the school district a raise, and we're, we are having a very hard time staying competitive and in some of our support staff positions with with, you know, pub- private industry. I mean, you can go down to Target, I think they advertise something twenty-four dollars an hour, or something like that, you know, and I think it was Hobby Lobby was eighteen dollars an hour. I mean, there's there's real jobs out there that are significantly higher paid than we are. This is really what I want you to focus on. So, if we were to do this, now again, we haven't raised millage in three years, and we've been very, you know, aware of that. If we were to do this, if we dump fifty-nine point seven five mils on six percent and and the other properties associated with, you know, vehicle taxes and so forth, associated with they're allowable on Act three eighty-eight, it would cost three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cent per one hundred thousand dollars worth of a settlement. So, if, you know, I had a insurance agency, you know, valued at a million dollars, you're gonna end up seeing a, what's the math, about a, you know, thirty-five hundred, thirty-six hundred dollar tax increase this year, when you're going down the street to the pump and paying four and five dollars a gallon for gas, right? And so, that's the impact on business that that we're looking at. So, you know, if you wanna get behind something, and you wanna get focused on something, and you wanna really talk about something, talk about this funding model with the delegation, because we really wanna give teachers their salary increases, and we really wanna give them what they're due. We've gotta figure out a way that it doesn't cripple our community to do it.
Go back to the previous
Yes.
Slide real quick. So, I mean, basically, so if we were to try to raise millage to fund, basically, the deficit that's gonna be created by this funding formula, it would be a twenty percent millage increase. I mean, you're you're talking three hu- three hundred and eight, increasing it by fifty-nine point seven five, that's twenty percent.
I mean, you're you're, yeah, this number's going up, that's right. Now, remember, you know, this generates nineteen million dollars, so in fairness, you know, this, sorry, I'm gotta scoot back here a little bit. You know, this number's thirteen point two. Now, that doesn't include
Right.
the deficit of bus drivers, and it doesn't include the deficit of we assume we will have with insurance. And certainly, it doesn't address anything with support staff. So, you know, just to do the thirteen point two. Now that, again, that's the local match. And so, what the local, requiring that local percentage, what that does is it takes the decision essentially out of the school board, the local school board's hands, and says, you have to do this. If, you know, in some cases, districts are paying the state minimum salary. And they are, you know, struggling to get teachers. I mean, we're struggling to get teachers, and we pay, you know, like I said, thirteen point seven nine percent higher. So, it that local match percentage is really, really important, to get, to give you the flexibility to go in and say, because obviously, if you don't have that, and you go up the fourth, the state minimum goes up four thousand dollars, okay, well, there's a starting point, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So then you would consider, what am I gonna do above that? You know, everybody's kind of at at a at a level, what, I'm gonna give everybody a raise. But what's that gonna look like? And so you've heard, you you probably have heard, some other districts already go out with presentations and be, you know, pretty vocal about you know, this issue. And and and, you know, I keep, I wanna say this again, no one is is you know, doubting the 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 need for the increases in in salaries for teachers. We've just gotta figure out a way to fund it that's, you know, manageable for for us and for other school systems in the state. So, but, and that that tells the story right there, to to have to to raise, you know, that type of millage in one year is a significant, now, is Walmart gonna see that? I mean, it's a blip on their radar, right? Target, whoever, these big boxes, whatever. But but they will, I mean, ultimately, they'll end up passing costs down to consumers, you know? But but it's not, it's not as impactful as that local small business that that we have.
But I do think, I guess that there is a silver lining that's that's coming out of this. This is really the first time you have seen discussion at the state level about a comprehensive tax reform. I mean, obviously, they're talking about making adjustments right now with the within, you know, state to state tax, but you're starting to hear more and more rumblings about comprehensive tax reform, because for this very reason, that in order to to supply the demand, it's carried on the shoulders of business, essentially, due to Act three eighty-eight. And so, I think at least there's maybe a recognition of that. I mean, you know, you know, could be wrong, but um, but hopefully, that's that's what we see, is continued tax reform and from a comprehensive level, not just a narrowed focus level. And obviously, we we have to deal with what we're we're given. And so.
Now, I mean, I I don't, I I don't even wanna mention this, because I'm, I may not make it out of the building, but, you know, it has been mentioned to me that, you know, an option that we could also look at instead of raising millage is just reducing our teaching staff and increasing our people teacher ratios in our classrooms. And so, I mean, that's, I guess technically, yes, that is an option.
Which is funny, because the presentation from Revenue and Fiscal Affairs about this funding formula was that the General Assembly, the leaders, the governor, Revenue and Fiscal Affairs, that their their goal was to reframe school funding based on the most most important resource, which is the teacher in front of the students. And so that's the, that's the framework that they used to build this, but what it's forcing us to do is consider fewer teachers.
Right.
Or fewer staff members. So, so just ironic to me.
That's right. So, that's a lot of conversation. Again, I I would encourage you to really have conversations with delegation about options. It's, you know, it's gonna be in the Senate next week. So, you have further questions about it, feel free to, you know, ask us, and we'll try to put together whatever information you need to help with that. I do wanna talk further, uh, because this whole idea was we were supposed to set some goals for the budget, right? So just taking a look at our our average daily membership, this is loosely an enrollment number, but it's number, but it's, it's, it's a calculation that the state does. You can see that in this year, we, we've grown 764 students. And so we had a, last year was the first year since I've been here that we've had any kind of reduction and really that I can remember that we had a number of under a four. We've, we've grown average growth, 500 students a year for 20-plus years. So last year we had a kind of a blip with, you know, COVID and, and online learning and so forth. We've grown 764 this year. We're projecting another 582 student growth in the coming year as we see more students coming back into the school system and frankly, just folks moving into Lexington School District So we've put some priorities together and would, would look forward to reaction from the board leading up to our first reading in April. Our, our focus is trying to maintain those student teacher ratios if at all possible. You know, staff salaries are, are really important. We were, we're really trying to remain competitive in this market and so that's a, that's an area of focus for us. Continuing to identify and implement employee retention recruitment strategies. Human Resources is working really hard on that. Our, our teacher leadership team is, is, as our leadership council, you know, getting feedback from folk, from those folks and others. We, we implemented some strategies this year and, and we saw some good results out of some of that stuff. We'll continue those, but we're looking for other strategies as well. We're looking to establish personalized pathways at the current Lexington Middle School site, you know, for Lula, Standing on Lula and College Center. So that's part of that shift we talked about with you in previous meetings about moving and establishing those programs at Lexington Middle School campus. Really focusing on intervention and instructional support, instructional support needed for learning acceleration, you know, and I, I think that, you know, addresses some of the conversations we've had earlier this evening already about accelerating students and getting them, you know, to the areas they need to be. Obviously enhancing safety and security, you know, we've, we're looking at some different strategies there and some ideas. In some cases, those are pretty big dollars. And then there are other strategies that, you know, aren't, aren't significant costs that we, that we can look at. So we're looking at some different things with that. And then this is a really important note as well, preparing for the conclusion of the federal COVID support funding. So we, you know, we had some funding that was like a, ended in a year, some ended in two years and some ended in three years. And so some, some of the costs associated with some staff and some other general fund expenditures that were charged to those funds will have to be brought back into the general fund over the next few years as those funding sources, you know, are no longer available. So we'll have to reabsorb those, those costs back into the general fund. So we, we need to focus on, on those as we go forward. So, you know, those are, again, the, the priorities that we're recommending. Love to hear feedback and conversation with the board about any others that you would consider or changes to these that you'd like to look at as we lead up into the development of our first reading, you know, in, in April. And so with that, I'm opening it up for discussion or any other comments or questions that you may have for us now that everybody's really excited and energized and.
So in anticipation of you asking us this, I just kind of thought of two things over the last day or two, but then I hesitate even saying them now because seeing all of those numbers, but I'll just say it and do with it what you will. We currently pay up to what step on our scout salary schedule?
Forty.
No, 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 no.
Forty. Years, years of experience?
Right.
Forty.
So someone with 40 years of experience is getting paid on that step?
So for, we put 40 years in on the teacher salary schedule this past year and the way it was implemented, it was a rolling number. So last year was 32, and this year's 32. And so it would, it, the idea was it would be added each year. We've looked at the cost of truing that up.
Mm-hmm. That was going to be my suggestion.
I'm going to say that cost, and I probably shouldn't say this, but it's around $280,000.
So $280,000 would be the cost to pay all of our teachers on the actual step if they're past 32 years.
Yes, that's taking those 32 plus years of experience, folks. Someone who has 38, it's putting them on 38.
38, right.
That's right. That's something we run the numbers on.
After hearing these big numbers, $200 and something thousand doesn't sound like a whole lot. I mean, I think if we're going to tout that we ha, we paid or our steps go to 40, I mean, we should pay to that board. If not, say this year, our salary schedule goes to 32 and, in eight years. So in 2030, we can say we paid a 40 years.
We, we can definitely look, look at that. I'll, I'll, I'll get you the exact number.
Yeah, and I think you sent it in an email. That would just be one of my suggestions. And then the other one's a very, very tiny one, but it's something I'm passionate about is all the little, the stipends that our coaches and, I know you guys are looking at that whole scale and kind of revamping that, but that's something that I think it's important.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I had some as well. I had also put everyone on the right step on the salary scale. Another is to increase subpay and assign a full-time sub to each school and give bonuses for working five days a week. I know Charleston pays $125 weekly bonus if subs work all five days during the week. Pay teachers their hourly rate when they cover classes. Take a look at teacher leadership minutes to see what their priorities are. Increase the number of H1B visas. Provide the preferred devices for instructional assistance because it's my understanding what they have now is not compatible with the teachers. An internal auditor position and budget money for cameras and get a maintenance schedule for technology such as devices, cameras, classroom televisions and projectors if we're not replacing all of those. And I also wanted to let the board know that if you will look at the annual financial report, there is a section called general fund budgetary highlights. And just for instance, in 2018, as we look at these numbers and they look daunting, just taking 2018 for example, our local revenue exceeded our budget by approximately 4.7 million. Our state revenues exceeded our budget by approximately 5.3 million and our final budget expenditures had a positive variance from the actual expenditures of 12.5 million. So right there along, you're looking at over 20 million, but that takes place every year since, and I just went back to 2017. Local revenue exceeded our budget by 5.6 million. Our state revenues exceeded our budget by 4.2 million and our final amended budgeted expenditures had a positive variance from the actual expenditures of $9 million. So if you're looking for money, there is a good place to start.
And I had a few on my list of things that I would love if, you know, we had, we found the pot at the end of the school funding rainbow. One of the, you know, as we talk about teacher recruitment and retention, I'm always quick to read any articles I see about what some other districts are doing. And I know this week that Charleston approved an incentive package for, to try to retain the student teachers that, and I don't, I know we don't have a particular challenge with retaining student teachers that work in our schools, but I thought that was a pretty creative idea. They put together an incentive package for their student teachers to take positions in the district. And it includes money to cover the state certification fees, exam fees, a $500 signing bonus and a bonus, a $1,000 bonus on their first day of school, which I thought that was kind of a nice way of incentivizing student teachers to pursue options in our district. And then another thing that I would like as a priority is to add a, a lawyer on our staff to do all the things that we need lawyers for to do in-house. I know there's a, a big need, we, we used to have one that helped with HR and some special ed issues. I know it would be great to have a lawyer that we can tap into for policy advice, for, you know, parliamentary assistance, just to, to kind of, to serve in-house as a legal resource, sort of legal services type position. So that would be my other request. And then I have one other, but in, as we talk about all these salaries, it's, I know that that's daunting, like Ms. Garrett said, but I actually have had this in my folder for about six months waiting for this. But when you look at our different categories of our staff over the last six years, there's one group that, whose increases has not, have not kept pace with the others and that's our administrators. They've received steps, but pretty much nothing else for several years. And I think we want to remain competitive with our administrators as well because every school requires a fantastic principal and assistant principals and senior leadership. And so I would just like to look at that as well, so.
Thank you. Just want to take one second to clarify one thing that we have a 313, 315 million dollar budget. We budget now for revenue that we anticipate receiving next year throughout the course of the year. So we have to identify how many cars are going to be bought and sold, how much, how many people are going to move into our system, how many homes are bought and sold, all these different factors to project an anticipated revenue amount. We don't get someone from the county or the state and, that says, here is your revenue number that you're going to get from me. And the state, in some cases, we do and those, those numbers are there. But I, I just need the board to understand that while Ms. Garrett points out a, a very good point, that over the, over the years, and, and I would encourage you to look back further and watch the trend, since Dr. Little Kane, that was one of his focuses. And since I was appointed to do the, the role of CFO, that was one of my focuses and we have obviously done some work on that. To reduce that amount of money that's left at the end of a year. The crazy thing that happens throughout the course of a year is you make a budget and a school makes a plan for spending funds and then COVID hits and you shut down for three months based on a governor's order. And then things that you thought you were going to buy, you don't buy. So guess what? You end up at the end of the year having less expenditures to hit against that revenue than you did, you thought you would. So you have a surplus. So, and then you may have higher growth than you budgeted for and you will have a little bit more revenue come in than you anticipated. So you have a surplus. So in a $313 million budget, you might at the end of a year have 10, 15 million dollars. I know that, that's not a big number. That's a couple percentage points on that big of a budget that are, are sitting in accounts. You might miss revenue because you only budgeted a 2% revenue growth and the county actually grow, grew at a 3% rate. It's real simple to, to look back at the numbers when you already know what the numbers are and say, why didn't you budget revenue this way? Well, you tell me what you want to put as, as the state and local revenues for next year. I'm happy to plug those numbers in for you. You have to plan and target and look at trends on a lot of these things and you do your best you can to hit a number based on a trend. You're not given a playbook that says, here's your revenue amount, okay? That's just not how it works. I appreciate the understanding, but it's not how it works. So what we've done to try to eliminate some of the, that large surplus that used to occur is done things like budgeting our payroll at a not 100% number. We never have 100% of staffing, but for many, many years, we budgeted our payroll at 100%. That payroll, 270 million dollars, you budget that at 100%. Every percentage point that you take off of that 100%, it's 2.7 million dollars. So if we hit a 95% fill rate for a year, you know, poof, there's 10, 11, 12 million dollars right there just off of one budget item change. We made that change so that we're not budgeting at 100% anymore so that we can shrink that number. We also scrubbed every account in the district, thousands and thousands of accounts and looked at budgeted actual amounts. And so if, if there were accounts out there that had big budgets at the end of the year that were unexpended, well, guess what? They didn't get that money the next year unless there was some extenuating circumstance around a software license that didn't get renewed for what, you know, there's some, had to be some reason, right? So we've done a lot of analysis and I, I, I put this finance team against any team in, in the state. And, and we've done a lot of analysis and a lot of work to, to keep this board in the position that it's in, to win an annual award on a comprehensive annual financial report, to get a bond rating, maintain a bond rating in this kind of climate and save millions of dollars back to the taxpayers. You know, we're sitting with a, you know, 22-plus million dollar, you know, essentially surplus, if you will, because of the, of the interest rates and so forth, bond rates that we've gotten through our sales. Those types of things happen because of the team here, the board that's sitting there and the fact that we're not every year struggling to fund our expenditures because we undershot revenue by significant amounts. I mean, you want to, you want to get in trouble quick, you don't project enough revenue. That student growth number drives everything we do. So if we don't project enough student growth and we miss it, well, guess what? All of a sudden, we have too many teachers in the classroom, you know, and, and we've got to pay them or, or not enough teachers. I mean, it works both ways. So it's, it's, it's a very simple idea to look at that, that book and make those comments, but there's a lot more to the story. And, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that to this group so that you understand how complex this process is. So I appreciate that.
And I'll just add to that. Like I said, if you're looking for some money, here's a good place to start. They always come to us when they need money, which is understandable, but we don't ever hear, oh, look, we had a surplus of such and such.
Ms. Garrett, I would have to disagree with that. When we've had a surplus the last couple of years, we've been able to give our staff bonuses. They've come to us with the surplus. I, I don't recall that they've come to us and asked for additional budget money. But does anybody else have any budget priorities they'd like to share with administration?
Well, I was still talking. So in one instance, in several instances, the district has transferred that surplus into a capital projects fund that the board doesn't see. So that's why I'm saying if you're looking for money, here's a good place to start.
That has not happened since I've been involved.
Ms. Garrett, we have not, we have not, they've not done that.
It says 2018 right here and then 2019.
That has not happened since I was CFO. Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Well, then the annual financial report is incorrect.
Dr. Guyton or Dr. Powers? Mr. Oswald, do y'all have any budget priorities that you'd like to share?
Thank you, Mr. Salters. And if anybody, if you have any budget priorities that come up and you want to email those to Mr. Salters or Dr. Little, feel free to do that over the next few weeks. And thank you to your staff for providing so much good information as we head into the budget season. All right, it's time for the ad hoc committee recommendations and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Guy.
Thank you, board. Before.
Board, before you, you will have the results of meetings with the ad hoc committee. We bring to you four policies for consideration. You have been provided with not only the previous or current, I should say, policy, but the red line copies of the recommendation coming out of the committee. In just sort of a review of the process, we kind of view the committee itself as the introduction. This would, of course, serve as first reading, and no vote would occur until next reading, or next month, where we would have a final read, and of course, any questions, concerns, changes to the policy. I will not go through each individual policy as you've been provided those, but I will tell you that particular emphasis was given to the words, quite frankly. I mean, we got down to the most granular level possible to interpret the, for example, changing program to experience, changing managing to overseeing. So a lot of consideration was given into the most elementary, basic level of the word that was chosen. Obviously, you have seen these, so I will open it up for any questions or recommendations that would, of course, be voted on next time.
I just have a suggestion for BBAA. Under the visit to school section, the first sentence where it says, "Board members will visit schools with the full knowledge of and coordination with staff, including superintendent and building-level administrators," I would like to suggest removing the words "and coordination with" from the model policy. So if you remove those words from the policy, it still requires coordination with school-level administrators and the superintendent being made aware of a board member's visit, but it doesn't require the superintendent's permission to visit schools. And the reason I made this suggestion is because I had to wait four months for Dr. Little to coordinate a classroom visit under the current policy. The teacher myself had decided on days and times, but I wasn't allowed to visit until Dr. Little had coordinated my visit with the principal. And since state law requires board members to visit schools, I don't think we should have to have permission to visit a school. So I think as long as the building-level administrator is aware and it's been coordinated with them, that it shouldn't require coordination, just we should inform the superintendent.
So moving forward, my recommendation would be that when this comes before for a vote, if there's a specific language change that it would be presented, obviously, as a board, you know, I would say that we digest the recommendation there over the course of the next four weeks, and certainly feel free to reach out to me with any questions about the committee and how we arrived at the language that was used, you know, specific to your question, Ms. Garrett. And so feel free to reach out about any questions there. But as far as procedurally, I would say I would make that recommendation as a part of the, if you so choose to make it a part of the actual motion.
And Dr. Guyton, I just want to thank the committee. I know y'all have been working hard on this, and I'll just make one comment, and I'll send this to you as well, but about the board self-evaluation.
Yes.
And just my comment would be that they not be annual, but every other year. Well, you know, we had our first one, we conducted our first self-evaluation in January, and to me, it would be, and this is my opinion, to be on alternate years with the intervening year being a board workshop, a board workshop, because it will be immediately after an election in which the composition of the board would change. And so you would alternate a board evaluation one January and a board workshop and training the next January, and alternate it that way. But that would just be my preference. So I'll send that to you for the committee's consideration.
Sure. Absolutely.
Right. So the workshop with, that is training and orientation and strategic plan, that falls the even years when everybody on the board has been on for at least a year.
And there was some discussion about that because, obviously, we believe, you know, that the timing of this, of the self-evaluation is critical, quite frankly, because, you know, you have a new board member that comes on in, say, December, then you immediately go into at least our training of a new board member, then you have the state training that occurs, then we immediately launch into budget season. And so we wanted to create enough distance in there that allowed a new board member to get a feel and a flavor of the, how the board is performing, because it's awfully hard to, you know, evaluate yourself when you haven't had much exposure. And so that was the thought of where it was placed within the calendar. I will be honest and say, we didn't really give much consideration to anything outside of annual. And probably for a point of clarity, it should be that the results of the self-evaluation will be reviewed each year in July and used to establish board goals for the following year. The thought behind that would be that the actual assessment would occur in close proximity to that event. So the actual assessment completed by the individual board members would occur in June, for example, and then those results tallied, resulted, and then reviewed at a meeting in July. And we can obviously clarify that if we need to. But again, to your point, you know, for any recommendation changes, I would ask the board to consider that over the next four weeks, and then if we have an absolute, you know, an actual change to the policy, then making that recommendation during the time of the motion.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. All right, we are moving along. Item 12.0, student travel requests. Do I hear a motion that the board approve the recommendation of 11 field trip requests?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Guyton. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Henson. Ms. Gaskins, would you like to give us a quick summary?
Sure. The 11 requests represent 10 academic requests and one athletic request. Mr. Cowell will be happy to answer any questions about the athletic one. And it brings me great joy to be able to review these requests, and you can see the commitment of both our staff and students represented in the requests that we're bringing forward. We have reviewed them, and they are all in compliance with board policy, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Board, any questions from administration? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Y'all are getting a little sluggish on me. All right. At the February 15th board meeting, the board discussed changing the start time of the April, May, and June 2022 board meetings on a trial basis. Do I hear a motion that the board approved the change in time to begin general session at 6:00 PM for the April, May, and June 2022 regular scheduled board meetings?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. Is there any discussion? All right.
I think in some paperwork we had, it said that the meeting would start at 6:00, but the call to order would be, I think, 5:00, where the board will open the meeting at 5:00, and the open public session would begin at 6:00.
It will, it'll follow the model we use now just an hour earlier. So general session, we would open at 5:00 or to go into executive session, and then the general session would begin at 6:00. The public meeting would begin at 6:00.
Okay. And I think we had some discussion about that last time, that general session and open session are the actual time that the meeting opens. So if you're opening executive session at 5:00, you're actually opening the meeting at 5:00, and that would have to be the time that you put on the notice.
Well, and you know, I talked about this last month, that we interpret that differently because we are opening the general session at 6:00, and the notice for the meeting and the agenda contain the time that we will start at 5:00 to convene for executive session. So I feel like we're in compliance.
But I sent you a legal opinion from the School Boards Association, and she says, when the meeting opens, before they take any action, that's when the actual meeting opens. So it would be at 5:00. So if we're changing the time of the meeting, we would have to put 5:00 and not 6:00. But I also had requested an item to discuss executive session placement, because I think that would help some of our issues. But I mean, the way the motion is written, like, general session is when the actual meeting starts. So if you're starting the meeting at 5:00, then we just would need to change that motion to 5:00.
But what we have now is the flexibility from when our meeting starts at 6:00, that if the executive session is only going to be a short executive session, as we have done in the past, we convene at 5:30 or 5:45 or 5:15, because that is the part that's adjustable because it just impacts the board members. But the part that the public attends is an established time, and it doesn't change. And so that would be at 6:00. And so that's why the times are published the way they are.
I'm explaining to you that state law says when you open a meeting, that's the actual time that meetings start. So general session wouldn't be at 6:00. General session would be at 5:00 if you're really starting the meeting at 5:00.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Garrett. Does anyone else have any more comments about that or concerns about the motion?
I do want to also say that state law requires you to post those meeting times a year in advance. And so you, if you're posting the meeting time, that needs to be the actual time that the meeting is starting, not the time that you say that you're going into general session. Like, there's a big misunderstanding here of what the actual meeting time is. I think that needs to be clarified before we actually move forward.
And I've not had anyone express to me that there's confusion about what time our meeting time is.
And board knows we're standing here late enough, so we'll start them out earlier.
Okay.
So can, is it possible to accomplish both by saying an amendment to change the meeting start time until 5:00 PM with general session starting at 6:00?
But we won't, we don't necessarily always start at 5:00 if the executive session doesn't require an hour.
But historically, we have done that. And if the executive session only lasted 15 minutes, then we...
We just hung out.
Yeah, we hung out.
Right. But we've actually done that, we haven't done that recently. We have, we've tried to have the convening time match up to the anticipated length of executive session, so that we always start our meeting at 7:00.
So is it the term general session that's, in your opinion, the hang-up, Ms. Garrett?
General session is open session, is the start of a meeting. So anytime you see anything to do with opening a meeting, it needs to be the actual time the meeting is starting. Now, I made suggestions, and I suggested that we change the agenda so that it says every meeting starts at 6:00, and that immediately after executive session, we will convene into general session. So, and some districts put out there, you know, approximately 6:15, approximately 6:30. That's just, that's where the time changes, is the approximate, and you just do that as a courtesy to the public to say, regardless, every month, we are going to be here at 6:00. This is where we're going to meet. This is the time we're going to meet. We're going to go into executive session, but you can expect us out at approximately 6:15 or 6:30, whenever. And it also saves time. So those nights that we may only have 15 minutes, we're not wasting another 45 waiting for the clock to tick down to 7:00.
But we haven't done that in months. We haven't sat around for 45 minutes in months.
But we've changed the start time of our meetings when we're required to let people know a year in advance what time our board meets, is what I'm saying.
Would you like to propose a motion, amendment to the emotion, or amendment?
I mean, you can stay 6:00. That's what I had in mind, but you can't start at 5:00 and say you start at 6:00. So the sample agenda that I sent you had, we will convene at 6:00, and then...
But that will not gain us an hour if our executive session is an hour. What we're trying to do is start earlier. Do we need to... Would you propose that we change the motion to start at 5:00? That's what we would need to do to accomplish what we are trying to accomplish through this motion.
Okay, that works. But I'd still like an agenda item to talk about executive session placement in the future.
So just clarifying, if we move it from 6:00 to 5:00, we would still follow the same model of one hour, and then, or we would start every time?
We would have to change the way things are noticed, so that we would flow immediately into our general session.
So call to order 5:00 PM, enter executive session. We would let the public know that as soon as the executive session is over, whether, like, today it was 6:52, I think, because I was like, I've got eight minutes to go to the bathroom. So 6:52, we walk back in here and begin, or if it's 6:30, or if it's 7:10, or whatever it might be.
That's correct.
Okay. Just making sure I'm understanding.
That's correct. And the reason we have not done that in the past is so that there was a set time. It was more of a courtesy for the public, because they knew to be here at 7:00 for our open session. But now it will be more...
Confusing.
A possibility. I mean, you know, it...
I would make a motion to table for additional discussion at the next board meeting, so we can get some additional clarity. Because I do think about, we think about the people who come here for honors and awards and those kind of things, and so do they sit here at 5:30, or do they wait till 6:00? There are some implications. So I would make a motion to table.
And I would say, we already communicate general session in the way we do at 7:00, so all we're doing is moving it up an hour. So I would suggest we support this motion, and then continue to work on the language if there's confusion about it in our community.
We've got an amendment to the motion, I think.
All right, Madam Chair, I think we have a first and a second, and that's up for discussion.
Yes.
If we want to amend the motion as stated, we need to motion a second to amendment.
Or we need to motion to table.
Or a motion to table. So again...
And our goal in this, let's keep in mind, was for next month to not be until 11:15. That was the goal. And so...
I mean, I'll second Kyle's motion to table.
To table it. All right. All in favor of tabling item 12.3, please say aye.
12.2.
12.2, excuse me. Oh, sorry, 12.2. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of tabling. All right. All in favor of not tabling? It's a tie. Motion fails.
All right. So now we have to vote on the original motion.
Now we're voting on the original motion. All right. All in favor of moving the start time, the general session to 6:00 PM for April, May, and June, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. The motion passes. All right. All right. Do I hear a motion that the board approved the amendment to the 2022-2023 academic calendar as recommended by administration?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approved the amendments to the 2022-23 academic calendar as approved as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Dr. Guyton. Do I have a second? I mean, Dr. Powers? Have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. I'm going to let Mr. Cooper tell us what he is proposing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. In kind of late October, a group of teacher leadership council teachers did approach Dr. Little, and they were very thankful of this board's calendar they approved this year that included a fall break. They thought it was just the right thing at the right time, and were very interested in seeing if a fall break could be built into the 22-23 calendar. Now, that calendar had been previously approved, I believe in August, by the board, but we set out with a group of teacher leadership council members to look at that calendar and see if we could find a way to work that out. So that group did pursue that research and was able to find a way to build in a fall break similar to what we enjoyed this year with a minor, with a minor change to the calendar. So included in your packet is that calendar. After the teacher leadership council made their recommendations, we took it to both the secondary and elementary principal groups. It received a resounding amen endorsing that change, and then went to the calendar committee as well, where it was very favorable to be approved as being what we wanted to recommend that the board consider. So if you look at the calendar, there is one change. There's just one change. This is the calendar that you approved earlier this year for 22-23, and it makes October 10th, Monday, October 10th, a holiday for students and staff, okay? That is adjacent to a weekend, and also the previous Monday where there is... is adjacent to a weekend, and also the previous Monday where there is a teacher work day. So that would create a four-day weekend for students and a three-day weekend for staff. To accommodate that one-day change, it does extend the school year one day. So students' previous last day of school was Thursday, June 1st. It now becomes Friday, June 2nd, and that teacher work day that was situated there does move to Monday, June 5th. So October 10th becomes a day off. One additional day is tacked on to the school year. The only other change that this makes is that it balances the calendar. It makes it a 90-day first semester, 90-day second semester, and we have 45-day quarters, pure 45-day quarters throughout the year. And so we bring that before you for discussion and action.
I think this looks great. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cooper? Thank you. All right. Board, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much for, and thank you to the teacher leadership council for coming forward with this idea. All right. And I just want to point out very quickly that our folks have built a new seating area for senior leadership. Did you notice they're all over there tonight for the first time? It's very nice to see you all together. Board, you have received the following reports for information only, the monthly general fund financial report, the monthly general fund budget transfers, the monthly capital projects report, the monthly unauthorized procurements report, and the quarterly grants report. Board, as we have talked about before, when possible, our additional meetings are going to be quick and sweet, and administration, Dr. Little, and Ms. Price have indicated that we will have some employment recommendations to consider on April 5th, that those could be taken care of during a quick morning meeting. And so we will meet at 8:00 AM on April 5th to consider those employment recommendations. That is very important, so we should all plan to be here for that because we do want to get those prospective staff members on board. I was going to, we were going to do some quick updates, but we're going to skip that tonight. But I just wanted to let you know that Dr. Guyton and Ms. Garris and Ms. Henson and I attended the South Carolina School Board Association Convention in February, and it was excellent. And Ms. Henson and I were able to attend a legislative breakfast for the Lexington County Legislative Delegation and the five Lexington County school districts and our superintendents. And that was a very helpful time, and we're going to build on that and have some additional meetings in the future. I believe Ms. Henson has been able to, and Ms. Garris have been able to access some of the school visits through the new format that we have, and I think that that is going really well. And I just wanted to say personally that it's so exciting to be back in schools and see students doing some things. I've been to impact conferences at River Bluff and IB presentations at Lexington Elementary and the celebration of excellence. I mean, I feel like things open back up just in time for us to hit the spring roller coaster towards the end of the school year. So lots of good stuff coming up. So if you have an opportunity to go in the schools and see what our students and our staff are doing, please take advantage of that. And do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Dr. Powers. May I have a second? Thank you very much. All in favor, please stand up and depart. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for staying so long.